Okay, since it's roughly 6:30, I'm gonna start the zoning board of appeals off with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to God. And I just say it with my own heart. One nation, under God, indivisible, created in a just one accord. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting, this hearing will be televised and recorded. First order of business is Westport Lakes Road, an applicant of Pine Ridge Estates LLC and Bradford Dean for a comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, for development off West Lakes Drive, consisting of 38 single-family homes on individual lots which contain two or three bedrooms, with 10 of those homes being designated as affordable deed-restrictive homes. Subject property is located at Zero Westport Lakes Road and is shown on Assessors Map 31 last 30, B, C, and 3B, 3C, and 4G. Applicant has requested that this matter be continued to October 2nd, 2024, at 6:30, mainly because we have four other petitions in front of us, and the 40B effort is, is gonna take a substantial amount of time, probably several hearings. Maria, do you have the official paperwork? Can I, no, for, for the, the request of continuance?
It was just an email.
Yes. Mr. Menard and zoning board members, we represent our client Pine Ridge Estates LLC. Presently, we are on the agenda for September 25th to open the hearing for a Chapter 40B comprehensive permit. However, due to the late timeframe of the agenda, we are, we are asking for continuance to an October 2nd meeting date. Please consider this email our client's approval to extend the 30-day period to which the ZVA must open the meeting. Appreciate your time and consideration of this matter sincerely, Paul Cusson, Delphic Associates Managing Member. So, anyway, we have a request for, for a continuance until next week, correct? Next Wednesday. So, do I have a?
I make a motion that we approve a continuance till next Wednesday.
I'll second that.
Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favors? And before I do this, the voting members on this will be the regular members of Jerry Catino, Ray Elias, myself, Roger Menard, Konstantski, and Cynthia Kozekowicz. Those will be the voting members for, for this, for this hearing, so.
And that'll be at eight, at 6:30?
At 6:30. And again, the rationale for this is, this is going to be a very lengthy process, and right now, they were scheduled to be last on the agenda, of which we have four other hearings, so by the time we get around to them, it would've, you know, it would've just been too late for us to, to manage properly. So, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. Let the record show that you're unanimous. So, we will start the Westport Lakes Road 40B application next, next Wednesday at 6:30. So, continuing, and I'm saying continuing because Ten Hillside Road is the petitioner for Ten Hillside Road here? We've seen you every month for the past, like, six months.
Oh, I'm gonna miss you guys.
I know, what are we gonna do without you?
I'm not sure I know what to do here if I'm.
What do we do every, every Wednesday? This is a continuation of a continuation of a continuation hearing on application of Timothy Gillespie, applicant, and Julia Kraft, owner, for a special permit to convert a portion of the existing garage into a detached accessory apartment containing 375 square feet pursuant to zoning by law Article 9, Section 954. Property is located at Ten Hillside Road, Westport, Mass., and is shown on Assessors Map 88, lots 116, 9, and 170. Now, this has been a continuation. We have gone through all the particulars of the special permit with the exception of an approved septic system. So, the only thing that was outstanding was the, was a letter or a notification from the Board of Health saying that your septic system has been approved for the special permit. And we received an email. Okay.
I hope you did.
And I have it here. One, one of many emails.
There's like several.
There's like several of them, okay. There's one.
Roger.
Yeah.
Oh, here we go, right here. Okay. Okay, no, I guess this isn't. You said you had it. I know I had it up.
Yeah, I just had it in my hand.
I think it'll be.
Yes, okay, actually, yep, right, I do have it. Yeah, okay, it's at the bottom. Okay. Ten Hillside Road is tentatively approved, just waiting on a couple of forms to be completed, just our red tape, but nothing that should hold up any approval sincerely, Nancy Paquette, Office Manager, Westport Board of Health. To me, I see no reason to, to hold this up again. We're waiting for paperwork from the Health Department. They've indicated that there's no issue with it, they're just waiting to, for the red tape to, to finalize this. Is there any other, any other? The way I would generally, the way we generally run, run this, this hearing is, we allow the petitioner to provide all the information, and then the board then asks questions, and then I open it up to public. We've already gone through that, like, six times. So, it's, by the way, but if there's anybody in the, in the public who wanna make a comment, you're welcome to, you know, to come up and, and comment on this. I'm sure you're all here for other things.
Do I have to make a motion to close again?
Yes. Well, are there any comments or questions before, before? Okay, make a motion to close?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Second. Any comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. By the way, the voting members will be Jerry Catino, the same members, Jerry Catino, Ray Elias, myself, Roger Menard, Konstantski, and Cynthia Kozekowicz. I believe in, to be, to be perfectly honest, I believe Jerry probably missed one, he might have missed one hearing on this, where we, all we did was do a continuation.
Continuation.
So, since there was no discussion, I have no problem with assigning him as, as a voting member, since we didn't discuss anything, we just continued it. Okay, so, I have a motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
We already went through that.
We already did that, yeah.
So, we closed. What we're closing the, the hearing means is that now the board will make a decision, we get no further input from the public. If we have to, we can ask questions, but to clarify something, but other than that, it's, it's really just a board discussion. So, discussion. We've gone through all of the particulars.
I think we've asked this enough.
We've gone through all the particulars, we went through the A through J requirements for a septic system back, I don't know, six months ago.
Right.
And the only thing that was outstanding then was with the septic, now the septic has been at least tentatively approved, or approved with paperwork coming.
Right.
Which is all really we ask for, is that the Health Department acknowledged that they have, you have an approved design. So, you know, I will make a motion to, and by the way, the rules now have changed on this, and they will change, the state has made a change to how accessory apartments will be handled in the future. They will, so we, town is actually gonna have to change the bylaws accordingly. Previously, we always mandated a deed restriction for things like making sure that it remain, that the, that the owner occupy either the, either the main house or the apartment, and that it remain a one-bedroom and a couple, you know, other things that are related to septic. That's no longer allowed by the state, so I don't believe that, that in all consciousness that we can mandate a deed restriction when the state has mandated otherwise. So, I'm not even, I'm not even gonna propose that we do that. Does anybody have an issue with that?
No.
I believe that goes into effect February 25th.
Well, partly that goes into effect now, the thing that doesn't, that doesn't go into effect until then is the, the actual special permit doesn't go into effect until February. So, we keep special permits up until that point, but the aspects of it, some of the aspects of it are immediate.
If we filed a deed restriction, it would be null and void.
It would be null and void eventually, so.
I don't believe we should expend town resources to do something.
To do something that's.
It would be null and void in February.
Right, right. So, the only, again, the only thing that, the only conditions that we generally put on this is very straightforward, that this is under condition that you follow the plans that were submitted, date stamped by the, you know, by, by Maria, and that's about the only restriction now that, that, not restriction, but condition that we put on it is that you follow the plans that you provided.
And the, the septic system, which is important, I think.
Right, right. So, with those conditions, I make a motion to, to grant the petition for, for the, let me, let me, let me read it again. I grant the petition of Timothy Gillespie for a special permit to convert a portion of the existing garage into a detached accessory apartment containing 375 square feet pursuant to zoning by law Article 9, Section 954. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, do I have any, any discussion?
Should we add Julia Kraft into the?
Excuse me?
Should Julia Kraft's name be added to the motion? As the owner?
Did I not say that? Yes, okay.
I recommend.
And Julia Kraft, right, owner for a special permit.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no. Let the record show that you're unanimous. Finally!
Thank you.
There is a 20, by the way, there is a 20-day period that, that it can be appealed, so, so don't start banking our nails for 20 days.
Sure.
I mean, you've been waiting six months.
Yeah, no worries. I can wait another 20 days.
Yeah, right.
Thank you, everyone, I really appreciate it.
We expect to see you again, by the way, next Wednesday.
Yeah, all right, I'll just come to watch.
Yeah.
Thanks again, have a good evening, everyone.
Okay, moving on, another continuation of a continuation. Hopefully, we can get through this one as quickly. 684 River Road, a continuation of a hearing of an applicant of Chandler Fritz and Matthew Fritz for a special permit, the applicant here?
Aye.
Aye, okay. To be, for, to construct a two-car garage to be located in roughly the same location. Wait a minute. One-bedroom accessory apartment, okay. To construct a two-car garage to be located on roughly the same location as an existing structure after demolition, and that will include a one-bedroom accessory apartment on the second floor containing 877 square feet, as allowed by zoning by law Section 954. Property subject located at 684 River Road, Westport, Mass., and is shown on Accessors Map 89, lots 135 and 138. We did need the River Road one.
Yes.
Yeah, a good thing I kept it. This is a continuation, again, we've been through the same thing, I think this is the number third time through?
Yes.
Once again, I, I believe we sat and went through all the conditions, there's A through J conditions for a special permit, and the only open action item was the septic system.
That's correct.
And we do have a note from Nancy Paquette, which says 684 River Road is approved. So, there's absolutely no reason to, now, I wouldn't say to grant it, to, you know, for any further discussion on this, since the, the only open action was the, was the septic system. Once again, if anybody in, in the audience has any comments on this, you're free to come up. If not, once again, I think we've been through this, I think, like I said, I think this is the third time on this one. And, okay, so, I am gonna then make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second that.
And it's gonna be the same members voting on this. Jerry Catino, Ray Elias, myself, Roger Menard, Konstantski, and Cynthia Kozekowicz, 'cause these are the five regular members. The other two members are alternates, the only vote when one of the members is not present. So, okay, where's, I, we voted, we, we, we made a motion to close.
Close the hearing.
Was that?
I make this one?
Ray's seconded.
Ray's seconded. All in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Once again, we're just gonna, again, I'm gonna say the same thing that we said before, we generally would've made a deed restriction, but because the state law changed just a few months ago, we don't do that anymore. We're not, and as of next year, we won't be allowed to do that anymore. And the only then condition that I would put on this is the same condition we put on the last one, is that the, your plans become part of the public record, and, and the condition is that you follow the plans that were, that were submitted. So, discussion, other than, only a discussion? No more discussion? Then, I'll make a motion to approve the applicant of Chandler Fritz and Matthew Fritz for a special permit to construct a two-car garage to be located on roughly the same location as existing structure after demolition, and that will include a one-bedroom accessory apartment on the second floor containing 870 square feet, as allowed by zoning by law Section 954, with the only condition being the, they must adhere to the, to the plans as submitted. Any discussion on the motion?
I'll second.
You'll second? Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, no. The petition is granted, again, it's a 20-day grace period, so, you know.
Okay.
Don't start doing anything for 20 days.
All right.
We don't get to see you next week either.
Okay. Thank you.
Three down. The next is, is a petition, Zero Sodom Road, which isn't actually at the beginning of Sodom Road, zero just means it doesn't have a number, application of Jesse Roderick and Kelly Roderick for variance from Section 7.1 to 7.6, because the property lacks frontage on a streetway and is a non-conforming property. Subject property is located at Zero Sodom Road, shown in Assessors Map 60, Lot 11, and the, again, the voting members will be Jerry Catino, Ray Elias, myself, Roger Menard, Konstantski, and Cynthia Kozekowicz. And the way, the way, the way that this hearing will continue is that I'll have the petitioner come up, provide whatever information the petitioner feels is, is pertinent. The, the board will then ask questions of the petitioner. After the board has finished asking questions, then I'll open it up to the public before we close the hearing. So, petition is representative, is that, Mr. Leach, is that you?
Yes, good evening. Sean Leach, Northeast Engineer, is representing Kelly and Jesse Rodericks in this matter. This is an application, and as we recognize and as discussed in the description of the project, we recognize that this is a parcel of land that was basically created by the state line moving back in 1862, and it has no frontage on a public way, but it does have enough upland area and any, can meet any kind of offsets, obviously, there's no building on there, 'cause there's no building permit issued. I submitted four exhibits, and I'll go through those exhibits one at a time. This is Exhibit A, this is the land that the Rodericks own on Michael's Lane in Tiverton. It shows basically their existing house, they have over 700 feet of frontage on Michael's Lane, that well and more in excess of any zoning requirement either for the Westport and or Tiverton. The uniqueness of this property basically was created because of the state line that chopped off the back half of this piece. This is what it looks like currently today aerial-wise, there's six acres cleared of the 20 acres that exist of this particular lot that is in Westport side. Again, this is, the lot line goes around, and it's one single-family house on this right now.
Where is Sodom Road in relation to?
Sodom Road is about 2,000 feet that way.
Yes, right, way to the east of it.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
This is directly behind Little Farms.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so, and I haven't, I'll get to that exhibit in a second, okay. So, those are the two exhibits that mean something. This particular, this is Exhibit C, and this is one that is probably of interest, Sodom Road being here. Crandall Road being here, the state line cutting down the middle.
Hmm.
This is the.
That's the property.
Which is 20-plus acres. This is their existing house parcel, which is, all these parcels were chopped off, and a lot of these particular parcels, because of errors in deeds and everything, end up being taken by tax title by the town of Westport, or sold at tax title. For instance, Mr. Messier picked up this one, a little land trust parcel in here that were chopped off, that basically, when they did it out, they've got to mention the land in Massachusetts and/or the man, land in Rhode Island. So, what happened, this is a quick little history of how this was published in 1862, Supreme Court made an unbiased decision to change the state line at this particular location that ran, the old state line ran basically through the Northwood Cuppa Pond, over and down Sanford Road, going down into Adamsville, and then along the west branch of the Westport River. In other words, the Westport Harbor at that time was part of Rhode Island. That's the reason you have, the only way to get to Westport Harbor is to go through Rhode Island.
So, I'm living in Rhode Island?
I am intimately familiar with the Rhode Island State Line, 'cause it went straight through the middle of my father's house, he had three bedrooms in Massachusetts and two in Rhode Island.
Ah.
Is, is part of the confusion.
Now, that has something to do with water rights?
The issue was, as the city of Troy, now the city of Fall River, became manufacturing, and there was a war effort on, they needed the water rights. So, what they did was, they very conveniently, they decided that, we're gonna, this line, which was established in the 1700s, and monument, there's stone bounds along that line, all of a sudden became in question, and then all of a sudden, it became part of Massachusetts, strictly because the entire Northwood Cuppa now became Fall River. Cook Pond, which is right on the Fall River, became part of Fall River, and that whole section of Fall River, the south end, where that water, the water is, including the Southwood Cuppa. And it's the reason that we all know, they took a little sliver of land going into Saudi Pond. So, when you look at the, the town lines and the state lines. At that time. And you look at what happened, it makes no sense, other than one reason. The mills in Fall River maybe petitions to have this discrepancy or change, and you ended up with this configuration here of the state line slash town line between Fall River and Tiverton. And what you see here, this little sliver here, all of a sudden became part of Massachusetts and part of Fall River, which is why, when you drive up 177, you get 100-foot strip of Fall River. Because they wanted Saudi, Saudi Pond flows from the Southwood Cuppa, which is part of the Northwood Cuppa, which is, drove the Quikashan River, which drove all the mills from Fall River. And you can notice, Born Mill, which is in Tiverton, is on the south end of Cook Pond, that's the only sliver of the pond they left in Tiverton. So, there was, there was a method to the madness, but what happened was, they changed the whole state line going down. They decided, we're gonna move this, as shown here on there, and cut right through, which would've gone up the west branch of the river and up what is Adamsville Brook. They decided to draw a straight line down through and along Breton Point Road. So, it cuts off Adamsville in half, Adamsville, Rhode Island, the village of Adamsville went up to, say, Vincent Ball Camp, now became part of Massachusetts, part of Rhode Island. So, what happened to all these parcels, and our parcels located, parked me right here on this state line, they chopped off the back half of all these farms. And in doing so, you know, at the time, there was no, there was no zoning, so no one thought much about it at the time, but as zoning became more prevalent, it became, you have these mostly upland parcels of land here that were usable, that became orphaned parcels because they were in Massachusetts, people didn't pay taxes on them, there was disputes, and it's not unusual circumstance. For instance, that little sliver of Saudi Pond that you saw that's in Fall River, people still argue, well, there are lots that are, these are all Fall River residents. This is the Tiverton line, this is Tiverton. All their frontage is, all their access is from Tiverton, just like we're asking tonight. It's the same thing, it's been done several times, but these people, I think, are thrilled because taxes in Fall River are somewhat less than Tiverton. But however, sorry, it, it's something that cut off all these parcels, all these farms, all these things, because Fall River took this sliver for the water rights to Saudi Pond. Now, as far as what's happened in Westport, the same thing happened to Westport. You have parcels going along, this is just the Adamsville portion of parcels, that go along, uh, get north up here. So, basically, state line, this used to be all Rhode Island in here, now Massachusetts. My father's house is actually right here, cuts right through. Old Harbor Road, which makes no sense, which is a Massachusetts layout, goes into Rhode Island, comes back out. This was all Rhode Island at one time, now it became Massachusetts. So, we have a bunch of lots along Old Harbor Road who have, have frontage in Massachusetts, but all their land and all their houses are in Little Compton.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not uncommon for them to issue building permits in Little Compton. Rhode Island has a little less stringent zoning than what Massachusetts has for buildability. They only require basically a certain amount of access as opposed to a frontage. So, you can get by, and this is what we're petitioning tonight, with this plan here, the only thing Tiverton requires is adequate access and a 20-foot easement to get to that adequate access. So, we are creating, and that's what this plan does, this adequate access goes back to that 20 acres of land to build one single-family house in a residential agriculture district in the town of Westport, that basically, that zoning, the zoning, whole chapter of zoning is for, to control density, use, and everything like that. This is a compatible use, it's on a, less dense than probably anywhere, half the places in town, and it's a hardship, it's a unique parcel because it got chopped off and the state line got moved.
Other?
Now, they weren't alive when the state line got moved, I don't wanna make that impression, but, but the parcels were created because of the state line.
Now, they only wanna put one single-family house.
Yes, so, Kelly Roderick, we live in the, on the Tiverton parcel, and this piece of land would be strictly for, like, extension of family, because it literally goes right by our home, so it would be my daughter that would be living here.
Are there any parcels similar to this?
Oh, there's a whole slew. I mean, this is, this is, I don't wanna say it's gonna be an ongoing problem, if you look at this, some of these are contiguous families, the Waits still own this whole farm, but I, I think, I don't know if you know Dean Martin, Karen Martin, they have a similar situation over there at Narrow Avenue, there's punch parcels on Narrow Avenue.
I, I did, I took the time to contact the fire chief and ask what his, what his thought process was for this, and he said that the plans that are shown there, and he mentioned Narrow Avenue.
Yeah.
He said, he's responsible for that fire district. He knows, if, if there's a fire at that location, it goes through Westport, and then it kind of comes from Tiverton. They help out, it's kind of dual, whatever. But he did say that there were more than just this one place that was like that, so.
Right.
I just wanted to bring that up, because I thought of it as a safety issue, as well, how do they get the fire trucks in there?
We went to the Tiverton Town Planner, and he, who approached the DPW, the concern from the emergency response in Tiverton is adequate with-grade construction for a road to get back to the house should there need to be adequate access. The way 911 works is, I would almost guarantee that the phone number for this particular parcel will be a 401 phone number, because what would happen in 911, it would ring to Tiverton.
He mentioned the fact that Westport was responsible for that parcel.
Right.
Even though they have no access to it. That was the other question I was gonna ask, is the access from the right-of-way on Sodom Road accessible for fire equipment?
It's all swamp land.
Yeah, there is, there is a car path that runs throughout the Sodom Road.
Yeah, but.
Driveability.
It's all, it's all wet.
Sure, the neighbor's tank, yeah, nobody's trying to, tank is getting through.
Through Webber Farm.
Yeah.
But there's plenty, there's like, the, the Coke's Apollo Club is up this way, and they're actually.
That's a little further south, right.
They're right up, they're right up against.
I was only concerned about how the safety was gonna be of it, so.
The visit ball.
But basically, if there was emergency response ambulance, it would approach likely be coming, Westport would contact Tiverton, Tiverton would send the ambulance.
It's pretty much what he said, too.
Now, I spoke with Jim White, the planning board, Chair of the Planning Board, and he said that they regularly, very often, have things similar to this, but just the opposite, where, where the frontage is in Westport, but the back land is all in Little Compton, as Sean has indicated, but the difference is, they have frontage.
Right.
Problem here is, they don't have frontage.
What would be the address?
What's that?
What would be the address?
That's a good question, I don't know what.
Like, would it be a Tiverton address?
I imagine it'd be a Michael, I think it would be a Michael's Lane address.
Yeah, so, in that regard, requiring safety, even though the property is physically in Westport, the address is a Tiverton address.
If somebody goes to Zero Sodom Road, they'd be driving up Sodom Road.
Yeah, yeah.
It's assessed in Westport.
Yes.
I might collect the taxes, but I don't think they're paying for it.
It's a weird situation, 'cause literally, when we have to do the perk test and the septic design, they're gonna have to come through here to get up there to do the perk test and whatnot, for, and everything would be by Massachusetts standards. And we always, obviously, it's a, we would agree to all the offsets that are required. obviously, it's a, we would agree to all the offsets that are required, you know, side yard by yard and all the other things, that's, that's a given. We're not too worried about that. It's, it's a matter of, you know, you have 20 acres of land, you have 700 feet of frontage, but you can't do it because of the state line running through the middle of your property.
Okay, let me read you something from our attorney, on the variance matter, which is this, this particular applicant. The applicant must meet all the statutory requirements for the qualification of variance. In other words, the applicant has the burden of proving, one, soil condition, shape, or topography of the land not affecting the zoning district generally. So essentially, our requirements for a variance is, you have to identify a hardship.
Right.
And hardship has to be based on some aspect of the land, like there's a ledge, or there's a pond, or there's, there's something related to the, to the land. Number two, substantial hardship related to unique soil shape or topography if the bylaw is enforced. Three, no substantial detriment to the public good if the variance is granted. And four, no nullification or substantial derogation of the intent of the bylaw if the variance is granted. So how do you comply with, with the hardship?
It's a very obvious, you know, hardship here due to the state line chopping off a contiguous piece of property. The uniqueness of the land is that, is that in itself. I mean, if you, we're going for a frontage variance. Not an access variance, not a offset variance, not, you know, where, you know, ledge is all over here, so we have to tuck it against this property line, or, you know, we can't access across a frontage because the Grand Canyon's there, so we have to come around the Grand Canyon, come in and get that kind of variance. This uniqueness and, of this property is created by a state line shutting off a contiguous piece of property.
Sisusa, you wanna, I want to try and add on this?
I don't have any issues with it, it's just, it's, you know, basically, I deny it on the fact that it doesn't have any frontage on our, our street or way.
Right.
So there's other properties in Westport, like Ben said earlier, that come in from all, they've got their driveway on, on Old Harbor to get into Tiverton or Little Compton. I mean, I worked with Little Compton building inspector twice on, on driveway on Old Harbor Road that are accessed through Little Compton through Westport. It's a similar situation just reversed.
Just reversed?
Yeah.
I mean, but have, have, have we, have we come across a situation like this in, in your term of office?
In Westport?
Yeah.
This is the first one for Westport, but basically, the ones that have happened, it's, it's Little Compton looking to, to get the frontage from Westport.
Okay.
And one, and one of them is, they owned a street width into the land, so that's how we was able to allow that.
It looks like
They owned the strip.
And they pretty much
On the road.
They own pretty much of it, too.
I have a question.
Sis, you're first.
I would like to have gotten a drone out because I didn't, I didn't want to go, I usually
You can't get there, right?
I usually visit all the sites before because I'd better to see them, but I wasn't gonna go and drive back into some property like that. But I was curious, from looking at this, what is this land? I mean, it's obviously been cleared. What is, what has it been used for? What is?
Just agriculture and, and some storage, basically. I mean, it's been cleared, like, that's six of the 20 acres, basically. The parcel is much bigger than that, that you see. That's where the house is gonna be sited on the existing clear, basically, property. So it's not like we're gonna mow down 12 acres of tree. And there's a concern, there was a concern, just so you're sure, of Tiverton that, are you getting access to put a solar field back here and cutting down 20 acres of trees? And that is not the intent. We, you know, the Rodericks are more than happy to put a restriction on one single family home.
And so is there, is there a pond back there? What is the topography?
Well, there's a, there's a intermittent stream that runs down through, which actually was the original property line for this particular parcel.
Looks like a pond, does it?
There's a pond down on Michael's Lane?
There's a, looks like there's a car in there, right?
Uh, the
This looks, this, or it might be a boat.
No, there isn't a pond.
There isn't a pond. I think it's either a piece of equipment, or a car, or a truck.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's just that it's, yeah.
It, it's all upland. Everything you see cleared, and of the 20 acres, 16 of it is upland.
Oh, okay.
So
Yes.
You know, it's, it drops off very steeply down to this intermittent
It only has a small portion of wetlands.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's a great piece of property.
Yeah, it, it runs down into Adamsville Brook. It's one of the intermittent streams that runs down to Adamsville Brook.
And of course It's the wood at the other end going through Maderis, and that's where that is, that's right through there, it goes right to Tiverton.
Does it a butt, the old Maderis?
Yes, it's a butt, yeah, it does.
Yeah, I mean, Milky Way Farm is right over here, and they have the same issues. And then, like I said, all of the Saudi Pond lots that are living in Fall River, but everything comes through Tiverton. It, it's, it's not dissimilar to what's going on at Blossom Road where they have, you know, Westport addresses, but Fall River, they're Fall River residents.
Well, it's not unprecedented that, that we have to go through Rhode, Rhode Island to get to other parts of Westport. And I see this as being very similar to that, only a little bit different distance. But anyway, as far as hardship, I, I'm not sure that the traditional hardship guidelines that we follow apply here. It seems to me that the government created this hardship, and I think the government has a responsibility to take care of it. That's the way I see it.
Can you go once again and describe access to this, to this parcel?
Okay, so the access for this piece, which is off of Michael's Lane, which is off Grand La Rose, which is the property that they're, the Roderick, Jesse and Kelly live at right now, right here. And the reason I'm showing the septic system in the wells is part of Tiverton's requirement, is to show that they're just not running over a septic system with the, with the access. So the access is coming off Michael's Lane, running along the north side of the property.
So that's like a 20-foot, I mean, what's the
If you look at the aerial photograph, it's pretty much existing.
It is built.
Is that a right-of-way? Do they own the property?
They own the property. In other words, the Rodericks will own the property. The only thing, and I, I gave the
Well, I mean, is it part of this parcel?
It's not, because it's in Westport, it's, it's in Westport.
No, you can't do that.
You can't do that.
It would be the
It's another state.
It would be the same parcel
It's actually in Rhode Island, okay.
Lines that it moved.
Right.
Well, all I'm trying to get is, what are, what are the legalities of that, of that access road?
The Tiverton requires, as Westport requires for the houses in Tiverton, whatever the required access is, with grade construction, whatever. And I think Exhibit D in your package is, is that requirement. It has to be adequate with grade for a VNC vehicle to get to work.
So it's actually an extension of our existing
Yeah. So the, the existing driveway comes up, it may need a little improvement, but it's basically built into the property.
But the, the Rodericks own that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, my, my question mostly is
It would have to be a DD easement for the
It would have to be a DD easement. Because otherwise, suppose they sell this property to somebody else, you know, 10 years from now?
Or the front
And the Rodericks decide they want to close that road off because
They can't.
Because their daughter isn't living there anymore.
They couldn't do that. This would, one of the requirements would have to be, as it, Rhode Island's a little different when it comes to access and frontage and things like that. They just require access, not necessarily frontage, Little Compton and like that. But you have to have a deeded 20-foot right-of-way going
Because that's not something we can mandate because it's on the Rhode Island side.
Yeah.
Tiverton will mandate it because they will have to do that, so they'd allow them to do the same.
All they can mandate is that, once it hit across the Massachusetts line, that the driveway that's there is still adequate for emergency vehicles.
That's correct.
But it wouldn't be, most likely not the armored vehicles.
And I had to go back to my father's house, where it has frontage in Rhode Island. They splits the house. We had to replace the septic system. Three of the bedrooms in Rhode Island, two were in Massachusetts. The garages in Rhode Island, the woodsheds in Massachusetts, you know, it's, it's got all kinds of, there were all kinds of, and you're paying taxes on basically half a house and half a house. It's a really weird situation.
Do they actually pay taxes to both states?
Yeah.
Oh.
Growing, I don't want to tell someone. But growing up
That's why it became a service.
When I, for my Massachusetts driver's license, I had a Rhode Island mailing address. And that always confused people.
Yes, yes.
When you filed your Massachusetts taxes, state of Rhode Island, because you had a Rhode Island mailing address, sent you a nasty gram saying, you're not paying your taxes in Rhode Island, but you wanted a resident. It's a really strange situation. And there are a lot of people in Adamsville of the same situation.
Okay.
I, I see no problem with this at all. The only thing, thing I question is how to get there.
Yes.
You know, because it's not a typical variance, but we have to get there someplace. And then, as Ray said, what are the other properties there? What's gonna happen after that? Now, the other properties are probably not like this one. Because the other properties, for example, Warren Messier, he has one of those lots in there. He doesn't have a budding properties
He doesn't have someplace where he can actually make access.
He doesn't, he doesn't own, own like she owns getting in there.
Right, right. Yeah, if, there are a lot of parcels, and Land Trust has picked up a piece behind the old St. Vincent's Ball Camp that's an issue just exactly like this. The state line splits it.
Yeah, I hiked it today. I went into, yeah.
And half of it is up on one side, and it, it was really confusing when I was doing the work for the Land Trust, because they were trying to, they, they don't have any authority in Rhode Island, anyway. But this, this is a problem. A lot, that's why a lot of these pieces, although there may be continuous, a lot of them, like, I think this one's a tax title. I know Mr. Messier picked up his tax title. I think Wettelofarren picked up one on tax title. But they were all part of these.
Hmm, right.
But they were, you know, and if the deed isn't written, land in Massachusetts and Rhode Island, you lost it.
Yeah. Interesting.
The, actually, if Wettelofarren picked up one of these pieces, let's say they picked up this one here, because they have frontage on Sodom
Right.
They could not come in with the same petition. Because they don't have a hardship. They could access across
They could access through their own property. Right.
And here they're accessing, it's not even asked, they're asking them to access through their own property.
Yeah, and that's the biggest problem.
And so Rhode Island was just fine with that when Massachusetts said, we're gonna
A small
Rhode Island picked up a piece of Barrington and a piece of Pawtucket. Because they wanted to get the most, most of the frontage of Secoc on the Providence River, basically. But the thing is, you know, Tiverton and Little Compton and Westport quoted on towns that issue were just farming communities.
Yeah.
I don't care.
Right.
You know, it doesn't matter to me, you know, because, and there's no zoning, and there's no, there were no taxes back then. So it wasn't a big problem, it's just they own land in both. And now, as things move forward, now it becomes complicated, and more and more complicated, and it becomes a real, I mean, Fall River has a real issue, and I can tell you the people in Tiverton that are on those roads, and who are, they want to send their kids to Tiverton schools, but they're Fall River residents, and what do you do?
So wasn't there, wasn't there two efforts to secede the harbor? I mean, they really made a mess of it when they did that.
The, the thing about
To secede from Westport.
There's other ramifications, legal ramifications between Rhode Island and Massachusetts. For instance, in Rhode Island, you own to high water. Massachusetts, you own to low water.
Right, right.
So when that part of the harbor became Massachusetts, Massachusetts acquired all the lands that Rhode Island owned, which was between high and low water. So everybody on the harbor owns the high water. They're the only place in Westport that owned the high water. All the rest of Westport owns the low water. It's a problem for documents and all kinds of other things. It's a legal nightmare. You know, if you, if you want to get into the weeds of these things, and eventually, the way the real estate values are going up, it's gonna get more and more convoluted and complicated.
That's why I think there's gonna be more of this.
Yeah.
Since 1984, there's not been one of these that has come before this board.
Well, it's good, it's good land.
I have a feeling that they will.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the sad thing. It's really good land compared to mostly Westport does.
Yeah.
It's wet, right? I mean, it's, and they're not using it.
If nothing else
They're using it for farmland, but, you know, unless, I mean, the Weatheros, I guess, when, unless the product was owned before, Weatherford bought this property. I mean, if I was them, I would have bought that, right?
I mean, the, the increase in the tax revenue to the town of Westport from basically what is being taxed as nothing, to a single-family house lot will be substantial.
Well, if nothing else, Ms. Elisa, I, I really want to thank you for the history lesson.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot of these things, and again, there's gonna be a lot more, like, I, I worry, as you do, how much complicated can this get?
Yeah.
Because every, everything is a case-by-case basis. I don't think you're gonna find a lot where there's frontage in Tiverton and there's access. Most of these are landlocked.
Yeah, so there's no, you can't
So there isn't a contiguous ownership. There is, unfortunately, on the piece to the north, which is the Waits Farm, which
Yeah, it's the Waits, yeah.
There are different names, but I'm not sure what can happen.
But all, but all the person on the Massachusetts side has to do is negotiate with the person on the Rhode Island side for access.
It's not, and it only needs a 20-foot easement. You don't need to own the land.
Right. It's an easement, right.
It can get, but that's only for a single-family house lot. You start doing five-house lots or a solar field, or something along those lines. That would be more of a fear on this land, because it's very high and dry land.
Yeah.
They got all these vacant parcels, let's just mow down 80 acres of trees and put a solar field.
Messiers couldn't get access through the Roderick's property because they would have to cross wetlands.
Yeah, there, if you see, there's little wetlands crossings showing.
Right, where if the two Waits properties were in the same place, you could see that the, one of the Waits would, that parcel would ask for, you know, an easement to there.
Yeah, I mean, there's a million walls in here, because you can see in the 17 and 1800s from these contiguous parcels, that they were all farmed. But they, again, for the last 160 years, this has been screwed up. And it was basically because Fall River wanted the water rights. It was, it was a water grab all the way to the head of Westport.
So maybe they should be paying for the sewers.
Wow.
Yep.
So Sean, there is a hardship from your point of view. Would you, would you indicate that the hardship would be, the government created it, and therefore we gotta deal with it?
Yes, I mean, they, you know, again, graded 160 years ago, but they didn't, you know, there was no thought of zoning, or any kind of restrictions to land back then? I mean, you could have put a landfill here 160
Was there any point in time when this would not have been a problem?
If you wanted to build a house, and even if you owned 1,000 acres here in this particular piece, and you wanted to put your house right here, we would still have to come
No, back in the 1800s
Oh, no, oh, no, they would throw, this houses in Adamsville that are that old, my father's house was built in 1820s. It's split by the state line.
Right.
There was no thought of it, okay.
But at one point, but at one point in time, it wasn't.
Yeah.
Prior to zoning.
Right. But just way prior to zoning, this happened, and nobody
But they kept shifting the Massachusetts line, so at some point in time, it was probably either in Massachusetts or Rhode Island.
Right, well, it was all on Rhode Island, that whole section
All on Rhode Island.
Basically, the, the, and you look at the purchase of Dartmouth, the Dartmouth purchase, it runs up the west bank of the Westport River, up through the Adamsville Brook, up going up into this whole watershed, Saudi Pond, Deval Pond. And that was the Rhode Island Providence plantations, Plymouth Bay County.
Yeah.
Which a lot of us that live over there have wondered for a very long time, why it isn't in Rhode Island.
Everybody asks that same question, and, and again, there's a lot of complicated issues. Because they moved the Adamsville Brook to create the pond, the mill pond in Adamsville. The mill pond, the Brook used to go right by the mill, obviously, it was built in 1600s. They dammed it up, and then they rerouted it around what is Breighton's gas station.
Yeah, but I mean, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at, though, is that if at any point in history, this was a viable piece of property with access in Massachusetts, then we can just say then
No, it wasn't, it was a viable piece
But it never has been a viable access in Massachusetts.
This was, this was all Rhode Island up to here.
Oh.
Everything this way was Rhode Island.
It was a viable piece in Rhode Island.
So, okay.
Right.
Okay.
It just all of a sudden, because of a land grab, that a land grab in Massachusetts became part of Massachusetts.
Yes, okay, so at one point, okay, all right, all right.
And if you look at Stone Wall, especially at the St. Vincent's Ball Camp, the one you walk up the main path, is about six feet off the Rhode Island line. And they knew about where the line was. Not exactly, obviously, they can, just today. And then, one side, two different ownerships.
Oh, yeah.
Is there any board member that feels we should not provide relief?
No. No.
Okay, given that, I think we should concentrate on what kind of conditions.
Well, before we do that, I want to open it up to the public.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I think that we need to address.
Is there anybody who wants to, uh, comment on this, uh, petition? I, I guess you're all here for the last one, okay.
What does this do for you, Ralph? Is this?
Longer drive.
If the board grants, I'd be issuing a permit for the house that's going to be built and I'd be going through, through Tiverton.
And then, okay, how are you going to get to go look at it?
Go through Tiverton.
Go right through Tiverton.
Oh, okay.
He's got a longer drive.
They allow you in Rhode Island?
Just take my truck.
Drives the electric car.
If he has permission, he can come through.
You can get through for, actually say this is Ball Camp, this cart pass, they get up through here.
I mean, I think it goes to the, you know, the new regulate or law or bill or whatever the governor put in is that we need more housing.
We need more housing, correct.
I mean, this is, this is a beautiful piece of land.
Yes, yes.
For, for Westport, to have that much acres with that little bit of wet.
You know, I mean, that's something actually that we should put in our decision. Because that is something that Massachusetts is pushing, is that we need more housing.
Yeah.
Uh, and this is.
I mean, there's obvious.
More housing.
Yes, there's obvious.
And, and there's nothing, there's, there's really no drawback to this, other than it doesn't pass our zoning.
It's just a weird.
Because, because of the way the property, you know, the, the state line has moved over the years. You know, a hundred years ago, it would, it would have been a Rhode Island problem and they, and they would have had no problem because they would have had frontage for it.
That's why.
Need frontage.
Planning Board in Westport grants those frontage lots all the time because Rhode Island doesn't care as long as you can drive there.
As long as you can get there, right, okay.
Now, would be the, the predominance of those lots, uh, be currently utilized for agricultural use?
I think not. Most of these are wooded now. They're all, there's pasture walls all over through here.
Probably was.
Yeah, and if you look back in the, I didn't bring a thirty-eight photo, but if you look at the thirty-eight photo, they were still used as pastures for.
Seventy-eight, there was, I, I cut down that language for, for Smith. It was after the blizzard of seventy-eight, when things dried out and they couldn't get back there, so we were getting stuck a lot, but.
I mean, there's obvious reasons.
There was some clear areas.
If sixty-one is going to get, uh, you know, to mess it up even more legally, would, would a lot of those be on the chapter sixty-one?
I don't think, does any, uh, the, I believe the Milky Way Farm and Hummer Governance Pieces up and along there and that part of it and up along Narrow Avenue, Dean Martins and those are on sixty-one A. But they don't care about what's on that side of the line.
Yeah.
They don't care. I mean, if we needed a release from this, obviously, the taxes are so small at this point in time because they're considered, quote-unquote, unbuildable lot.
Yeah, and the town's not going to buy it and, and you don't think the land trust would buy it?
If they were contiguous.
Land trust wouldn't have any access to it except for a footpath.
If it was contiguous with Adamsville Brook, but, um, Wettelof Farms is in between and I don't think.
Yeah, the only, the only one who'd be interested is Wettelof Farms to buy it.
Right.
But then they, yeah, you can't even have, because there's so much wetland, you can't cross it.
Well, I, like I say.
And there's no way a subdivision would go in here, right?
What conditions?
Yes.
We, we.
I mean, let's say we look at it, you know, twenty-one, forty-two, like, doesn't mean as long as the line stays the same, it would be hard to get a subdivision in here because we'd have to, like, if they just, you know, after the, the Rodericks have, have moved on, they, you know, they have one house on a twenty-four acre lot, that's a lot of houses you could put there. But the chances of getting the permission through Michael's Lane, which is probably partly town-owned, to the private part of the Rodericks to get a subdivision back there would be probably slim to none.
That's not necessarily true. Not that, that, they didn't intend to do that. If they built a forty-foot way with drainage and all the other pertinence required, where subdivision road in the town of Tiverton, basically they could extend that road into Westport and have legal frontage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and there are a couple of subdivision roads off, Rayton Point Road that go into Little Compton. If you go to, uh, Pequahawk, that's a, a good example of a subdivision that goes into both states and there's roads in both states and it's split by the state line.
All right.
But it'd be a lot to get there because of the products.
Oh, no, it would.
The products would have to give a forty-foot lineway, also the Michael's Lane would have to increase, which maybe hinges on some of those property here.
If the concern is, you know, does this parcel want to put in a trailer park here and put a roadway in and do all kinds of, again, Tiverton had that concern, because they would have say over, well, you're building a forty-foot road and it's twenty-four pavement, how many houses are you going to be on that road?
Right, right.
They have the same duty, the planning board, that the planning board in Westport would have to say.
Neither the Ro- Rodericks could put up a toll booth. Get the property.
But you, in the beginning, you said that they only wanted to put one house here and you would, you would take a restriction to that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, there's no problem.
Well, that's one.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, but I'm, I just to answer Ms. Scott Zachowitz's question. You could put a road, a subdivision road up into here and extend the cul-de-sac in here and it would have legal frontage on a road in Westport and I don't know how you would deny that.
Yeah.
Not, but they have no intention of doing anything more than one house. I don't want to put down that road.
And it, again, that becomes the, Tiverton would get involved because then it's their emergency services.
But Tiverton and both planning boards would have to get involved.
Yeah, it'd be their emergency services servicing that and they may not be too keen to that.
All right.
Okay, um.
I'd love a single-family house of twenty-four acres.
There's no other discussion, um, attempt to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
We can still discuss it. I mean, that, that would then allow us to discuss it. So we have a motion to close. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. All that means is that we're going to make a decision, uh, if we have questions, we will ask it of you, Ms. Leach, and otherwise, uh, Jerry, you want to start this off?
Well, I think the first, the first and obvious one is to restrict it to one single-family house on that parcel.
Yes, and I, I'm not really sure what else we can, you know, realistically do. I mean, it's a, it's certainly a big enough parcel for it to do anything, so.
So what if they wanted to put an accessory apartment in this place at some point?
They can, because it's a matter of right.
Right.
Yeah, they would have had a right on that.
Tiverton also has the same, Rhode Island already has the same rights on the ADU.
Yeah, Massachusetts just passed a law.
Right.
Saying that now ADUs are.
A matter of right.
By right.
By right.
They clearly had the room.
I suppose we could also put, uh, that it would not be further subdivided.
Yeah, I think that's possible.
Yes, yes, is there any issue with not subdividing that, that property? Okay.
This little guy doesn't want a piece for himself? Yeah, but he may, when he gets older, he'll want his own house.
I will be torn with him now that I'm.
Okay. That's that, looking out for that little guy's interest. He may want to have a nice big house. He's got a nice little track of ATV riding for twenty-four acres.
Well, I suppose we should also condition it that they do provide and maintain at, at least a twenty-foot, um, access. You know, for vehicle, vehicle passage.
Well, based on the plans that are submitted today.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, uh, the plans submitted today show that, does it?
I think that's Exhibit A.
I'm not sure we can actually do that because that's actually in.
I don't think you can.
Right.
Right, that's in, that's in, that's in Tiverton.
It's in Tiverton.
So Tiverton is, you know, like, so Tiverton's part has to put that restriction on, because that's on their land, Tiverton's land.
Right.
The, the access is.
That laneway is actually in Tiverton, so we really can't put restrictions on that part of it. Not restrictions, but conditions on it, but, um.
Well, how can we, how can we assure ourselves that there will continue to be access for the Westport Fire Department and so forth? If they, if we don't say that they must maintain.
I, I certainly believe that we can, we can stipulate that they have, uh, that they have a twenty-foot access because that's really what it is, because we don't, because the rural route, the access is actually in Rhode Island, which we have to, we can stipulate that there is access to it.
Right, but I'm saying they also have to maintain it so that, you know, a year from now, trees fall on it and.
But, um.
I think that's between, that's between the property owners.
We can't put stipulations on things that are in Rhode Island.
Yeah, and that's between the property owners. So when and if the, the property is separated from families, then whoever is buying that lot is going to make sure there's a, something appropriate in their deed for access.
Obviously, that, that access road has to just not stop in the Massachusetts, at the borderline. It has to actually go into the property and service the property.
Right, obviously, I mean, there's going to be a single-family house, so every driveway, everybody means it's a driveway.
Right.
I mean, you kind of, as much as you can, but you'd be kind of crazy not to, you know? How would you get in and out? How would anything get in and out?
Well, the fire chief said he was going to go that way.
Right.
But Tiverton would probably go first.
Yeah, he would call Tiv-.
And they'd still be responsible for the site. Westport would be responsible for the site.
And it's going to have.
He'd say that, he was clear about that.
Because most likely it's going to have a Tiverton address, so then it really isn't. I mean, even though it's Westport, we're technically responsible for the people here.
He did say that access is going to come from there, it's going to go there first.
The fact that the call is going to come from, you know, twenty-seven or whatever in Michael's Lane is, you know, it's going to, it's going to be Tiverton.
It's going to end up in Tiverton, right, right, which is right up the street anyway. Uh, so, uh, can we?
It's a regular street until the Roderick's property. It ends here, the street. And now the Rodericks is providing an access.
An access road, right.
But that's Tiverton's.
So we have a deed restriction for a single-family dwelling. The, the only condition is, is, uh, obviously it has to comply with the drawings that are supplied.
I mean, they'll have to, obviously they'll have to submit house plans to Ralph and they'll have to, will have to do an Asbill plan that shows it.
Right, yes, yes.
And foot sidelines.
All the regular buildings.
All the graveyard, all the stuff that has.
I mean, the only thing.
Septic system, the United Septic System as required by the Westport Port Bell.
Right.
Those are all things that are, it's a weird.
Yeah, so it has to, it has to conform to our zoning laws of front, not front, except for fronted setbacks uh, and, uh, septic.
Right, that's all the stuff that Ralph is going to take off.
Yeah, Tiverton has a very strict front yard setback. They go, they go seventy-five feet in this district.
Yeah.
That's why this house is sitting where it is.
When we, uh, say single-family dwelling, I think we also should say an accessory, uh, uses or whatever, bond, uh,
An accessory structure.
Accessory dwelling, whatever.
Or accessory structures.
It goes with it.
Okay.
It does not mean another house.
Right, okay.
I, I think treating it as a single-family house.
Single-family house, really, yeah.
It's the same thing, any single-family house can put a garage on.
You can put a garage on it, you can.
As long as it has space.
Put a barn up.
As long as it has space, right, I mean, you know, I can't put a barn up because I don't got any more space in my property.
Okay. Any other, any other comments?
No, let's move it.
Any comments? Would be proposing a motion? Go ahead.
Uh, I'll make a motion to grant the variance for Jesse Roderick and Kelly Rodericks from Section seven, one and seven-six because the property lacks, in a way, is known for farming law. The subject property is located at zero Sodom Road and is shown on the access map sixty, uh, Lot eleven.
Right.
In conjunction with the plans that are presented in front of the board today.
Right, and with the deed restrictions.
And that, the hardship.
Yes, and we, we need to identify that the hardship is based on.
The government.
On the government changing of, of the state line, which now makes this property inaccessible.
Through, yeah.
So.
Anything else?
And then just say.
With the restrictions.
You know, again, I think it's, it's also in line with the, the governor's request of.
Right, yes.
Building more, building more houses.
And this is also, right, yes.
I'm not sure, we want to do a restriction on subdivisions? I think that could complicate things. I think if they want to subdivide, they have to come back to us and we can still deny it. And if we put a restriction on subdivisions, you know, a hundred years from now, be a little bit problematic.
Well, even then, I mean, technically, if they have enough land to subdivide, they could.
Right.
Right, they'd have.
And they'd still have to come back.
They'd have to go to the thing.
Lending board, so I think.
Right, I don't think we need to put a restriction on that.
If we do, in a hundred years from now, we're all, you know, in a, in a restful place and Westport's different, they may want to, and then they have to.
Have to undo it.
Undo, undo our little tie that we put in.
Right, right.
But we have the, the right to deny a subdivision if they came before us two years from now, right?
Because somebody may pick up a bunch of contiguous parcels run a road between Sodom and Cranley Road.
Right, okay, uh.
We have a motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Let, uh, that's unanimous. Uh, there's a twenty-day waiting period. Uh, Ms. Leach, again, thank you for the history lesson.
Well, I mean, it's.
Hopefully.
Again, what's, all things got to do with my government.
Well.
Well, that's not the first time.
You don't got to convince us about that part.
Yeah. Well, it's funny how Supreme Court took this important matter up in the middle of the Civil War.
Yeah.
It was water, it was very important.
Yeah. Hope everything else works out well for you all.
Thank you.
Okay, the last order of business, I guess, what everybody is here for. Uh, eleven-eighty American Legion Highway, applicant of McCady LLC for a special permit to construct three additional storage buildings in the Aquifer Protection District as mandated by zoning by law Article Six, Section six-two-four C. Subject property located at eleven-eighty American Legion Highway, Westport, Mass. And is shown on access map twenty-eight, Lots thirty-two F, thirty-two H, and thirty-two J. Uh, those voting on it will be Jerry Cutino, Ray Elias, myself, Raj Manar, and David Kukowicz. And again, once again, the process will be, we'll let the applicant or the applicant's representative provide whatever information is available. The board members will then ask questions and then I will open it up to, to the public. Uh, before we start though, um, you know, we've, I've had several, um, well, first of all, I had, uh, an email from our town planner that says that you really need to get, um, a, a site plan. We, I, I'm sure you've seen the emails. We've had emails from a lawyer saying that, that really the precedence is that you should be going through site plan permit first before you come through Aquifer Protection because if you went to the Aquifer Protection now and we approved it and then you went to the site plan and they modified it, you'd have to come back to us again for a modified Aquifer Protection. So what they're suggesting is that you, we continue this until the point when you have a site plan approval. I, I wouldn't say withdraw, just go through the site plan approval. Once that is approval, we can continue this and, and then, and then work through the Aquifer Protection. That's the recommendation.
If I may.
Yes.
Ernie MacLong for the applicant, here with Sean Leach, also representative. I spoke with town council earlier today, George Pucci, and talked about, you know, our reasons for going the way that we did and making the application first. First and foremost, the cost of going through the planning board process is a lot higher. As you know, you issue a special permit, it's good for three years. We'd have three years to act on it. The thing I wanted to state was, when you said that if you grant us a special permit tonight and then we have to make any amendments under the planning board, we'd have to come back. Not if we grant the special permit tonight with conditions that state that we would have to require, get, you know, that we would have to get site plan approval and also go before conservation. So if you plan, approve the special permit contingent upon their subsequent approvals, then we, we can go forward.
No.
The, the, the scope of your authority, according to the bylaws, states that you're looking at this for the use.
Yes.
And the use alone, and that the plan.
We are looking for how you affect the Aquifer.
Yes.
Now, if you go to the site plan and they require you to make a change that affects how it affects the Aquifer, then you come back to us.
Okay, I mean, we, we could do, then we could just amend the special permit at that point. The biggest reason for us was we do not want to go before the planning board, get everything done, go through site plan review, third-party consultants, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
Get all of that and then come back before the board at that point and, and get a no.
Yeah, but we can't make our decision without that information.
You, you can.
We can.
You have the authority and I did confirm that with town council.
Yes, yes.
And I reviewed, I reviewed that in our bylaws, that is actually.
Well, actually, there is a clause in there that I was reading and.
Six something.
Uh, page thirty-six. I believe, yeah. Okay. Okay, where's Aquifer? Maybe it was forty, thirty-six it was.
The Aquifer Protection Section starts on page forty.
Forty, that's what I thought. Forty, that's what I thought.
And then goes to page 45.
Yep, okay. It goes through all the, you know, you can't store pesticide, all that kind of good stuff.
All the list.
Okay. Section C says, "The uses set forth below are permitted within the aquifer protection by special permit only and are subject to the approval of the granting authority," which is his zoning board of appeals, with, and then there are a list of things underneath that that are required. "All commercial and industrial activities permitted in the underlying district after site plan review that demonstrates compliance with requirements of this section." So it says in here specifically that we do this after site plan review.
Okay.
If I may.
Yes.
This entire section...
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sean Leach, Northeast Engineers, representing or working with the applicant. The language that you're reading was drafted before there was actual site plan review requirement at the planning board. The site plan review at that time, when this aquifer protection district was passed, was what's stated here, what needs to be on the plan for you to make your determination. So it doesn't mean, I know it says site plan review, but they're meaning site plan review under your purview that's in this bylaw. You're just reading it as site plan review as opposed to the planning board. I highly recommend you change the wording at some point to reflect however you want it to be.
The zoning board of appeal doesn't do a site plan review.
It does initially, under this, under this bylaw, before there was a site plan review at the planning board.
Planning board doing it.
Planning board does that.
No, but prior to...
Oh, prior to.
And this is just...
Ready, I'm just reading the words here. I mean, it's...
Yeah.
But it's the site plan that complies with this section of the bylaw, meaning that we comply with and have the plan submitted per...
Just because the, that language that was in our bylaws before we had the planning board site plan review, it's the planning board that changes our bylaws, not us. We make recommendations. So the fact that they decided not to change the bylaws to take that out of our purview, or I think it was intentionally they left it there because originally it was our site plan review, but when they did subsequently do planning board site review, they decided to keep the language because it worked, because they were still, the intent was the planning board site review, the way I would read it.
And there's no doubt, and we're not trying to do an end around or anything like that. There's no doubt, we know we have to go to planning board for site plan review for their third party and all, and that is, that is planning to be submitted next Tuesday, right?
Yes.
Next Tuesday, on the 10th.
October 8th.
10th, right?
8th.
8th, okay, October 8th. That's completely intended to be done, and it's actually stated on the plan that we shall meet, we shall have to meet the requirements of the Westport Planning Board and all their requirements for site plan approval. So...
Are you a meeting with them on site plan approval on the 8th?
No, no.
No, no, no. We're submitting our application. We wanted to do this first. We spoke with Ralph. I've spoke with the planner earlier today. He, in the email that we were both CC'd on, he stated that they're fine either way. The planning, the town planner said that he's okay if you grant the special permit, and then we go forward with our site plan review. And at that point, we're going, you know, that's where they're going to have their third-party consultant review, the, you know, hydro cad model and all the calculations and the drainage plan and all of those things, because that's on their end, and we have to comply with the aquifer protection standards, which, as it states on the plan, we fully intend to do.
This was up in front of, well, this was discussed last night at the planning board, and it wasn't a unanimous vote saying, oh, this is what they have to do. Actually, one of the, I think Manny Source spoke up and said, doesn't it make sense? This was entirely due, we actually said that to him.
I've done other types of special permits in other towns, and typically, we get the special permit first because if you go through all of this, as I mentioned before, you go through all the site plan approval, pay for all the things, do all of that, and then you ultimately say, no, it's a waste of time.
But why would we if it met all the other...
No, because aquifer protection is different.
It's within your purview. If you wanted to, I mean, I'm not saying that you would, but if you chose to, we would have wasted all this time, money, and energy. So versus doing it this way, we get the thumbs up from you guys. We can go to the planning board and say, they like what we're doing here. Now we have to comply with their plans, their requirements.
Just be advised, there is a possibility that if they require you to make changes...
Yes, significant amendments.
If there's an amendment that has any impact whatsoever on a potential aquifer, you're going to have to reapply to this board, for any, as a whole New...
The special permit would be null and void at that point, the one we issued, if we issued one today.
Yeah, because it was a change, because one of the things, one of the conditions that we would put on is based on the plan submitted. If the plans are changed, then that nullifies the permit.
You could, you could put the condition to be major components of the plan.
Yeah, that's a tough one, because who determines that?
Yeah, I understand.
I think, you know, one of the reasons, and this is probably the problem with, you know, who has, whose jurisdiction is what over what part of this. I mean, there's specific language in here of what you have to show on the site plan for your approval. And there's obviously very specific things at the site plan approval at the planning board, which are actually more stringent than on yours. So the possibility of them having a less protective part of this aquifer is highly unlikely, because one of the things that weren't considered even when this bylaw was drafted was the 200-foot riverfront, all the wetlands, 25-foot no activity, all these other things that are not mentioned here, you know, the conservation.
That's exactly the reason why I would say we should do it after, because if you say that our, our level of stringency is less than the planning board, that I would assume that if the planning board and the conservation committee would approve it, we would have no, we would really have no basis to not approve it.
You could say, you could say that the use is not, is not approved by it.
Yeah, under 6.2.
We're here for the, for the use. And the procedures under this exact bylaw, 6.2, the procedures for a special, issuance of a special permit, special permit granting authority being the, you know, zoning board of appeals, shall grant a permit only upon a findings that the proposed use does not pose an actual or potential threat or material damage to groundwater quality, and that all adverse impacts to groundwater and disturbance of natural vegetation have been avoided or minimized to the maximum extent reasonably practicable. I think that we can demonstrate that with the plan that we have.
How?
I have no problem...
What are you going to store there?
It's household storage.
But sometimes you have cars, and cars have oil, and cars leak oil.
Well, we're, yeah, we'll get into all of that.
We can get into all of it.
I have no problem, you know, if you want to continue with this, I'm fine with it.
But the exact, this, to that exact point, exactly what you just asked is a perfect example of why if we go before the planning board and get that approval and get all of that, and then come before you and you have concerns, it changes everything.
Yeah, but they would also have the same concerns. They're going to have the same...
Their purview's less, has less to do with the aquifer and more to do with the site plan itself.
Right.
In other words...
Parking, access, you know, grading, et cetera.
I agree. I mean, we're zoned commercial here, and the commercial district allows certain things that aren't allowed in the aquifer protection district.
No. No, I get, I get all that.
Yeah, okay. I mean, because we're trying to figure out, if you say, no, we think this is a overburdening of the aquifer with these buildings as proposed and the access lanes that we're proposing, we would...
We'd go back to the ground.
...continue to modify, and then we know, okay, you only want, you know, a doghouse here. That's all we're allowed to put. So that's what we'd have to do. We'd have to come back to the plan that showed that, right? So it's hard to go to the planning board and say, we know we can meet the aquifer protection district, we think, because ZBA said, well, we'll decide when planning boards decide. It's kind of, you know, it's kind of like, well, do we wait for the board? They don't look at this aspect, really.
They don't look at, they don't look at how it affects the groundwater. They look at how it affects...
Oh, no, but they're...
Conservation does, but they're not...
I don't feel...
Absolutely, they look at that, because Massachusetts stormwater guidelines require you to look at that, require you to infiltrate, require you to have separation of the groundwater, just like the board of health with the new septic system requires you to protect the aquifer also.
Okay. So why don't you go ahead and continue on with your presentation. There's a whole bunch, I mean, and I assume you have it in front of you, requirements for how you are going to mitigate or protect the aquifer, which is what we're here for. So why don't you go ahead and describe how you're going to do that?
Okay, so again, Sean Leach, Northeast Engineers, representing Long, the applicant. This is an overview of the property. As most people know, it's the old St. George School. If we've been here long, it's the old St. George School, which has been turned into a storage facility, and they're looking to expand it by adding three buildings to this storage facility, semi-in the footprint, and meet the requirements of the aquifer protection district. And that's all mentioned in the notes that are on the plan, that we will meet the requirements of 6.2.0b, which is the prohibited items, obviously. If we're prohibited, we can't do it, and also everything else that goes with that, including meeting the requirements of the site plan of the planning board. So what we're proposing are three buildings. This is kind of an overview. I kind of blew up the section of what we're doing around the existing school. What's happening is there are going to be three buildings, eight, 250 square feet, two 6,000 square foot buildings, where they're going to get rid of the existing gravel driveway, provide an access road here to and from the buildings to use as storage units. Some of this building will be taking up the existing impervious area. We are increasing the impervious area, and as required under the aquifer protection district, we have required to infiltrate all the water that we take from these new buildings into the ground itself as part of the aquifer protection.
Can I identify in there what area is covered under aquifer protection?
The entire parcel.
The entire parcel, the entire parcels in the aquifer protection district. Additionally, we have this laid out to meet other parameters that we know we would have to meet. One is everything out of the 200-foot riverfront area, everything out of the 25-foot no-activity zone that this conservation commission requests, and again, meeting the infiltration requirements of all the stormwater runoff over time in a low-impact development, because we're below the required area to mandate a low-impact development, but we're still doing it anyway by using grass whales and sediment removal techniques before the infiltration and before anything gets anywhere near the wetlands. That's what's being proposed. This is what's being asked for. The use itself, again, is storage. There are concerns about storage because you never know what somebody might do or anything, but there are restrictions that can be put on for the storage of the property that meet the requirements of the
We have restrictions within the storage facility as it is, that there's no hazardous materials being stored, just to add that into there.
We show the existing topography. This is a wetlandous line that was flagged by biologists. All of these things will have to be accepted, obviously, by the planning board, by the conservation commission, the existing septic system. There is an existing septic system for the school, which is humongous, because it was a school, obviously. That's being abandoned to a new septic system that only requires the amount of sewage for a warehouse facility, which is like five gallons per thousand square feet, as opposed to, you know, 500 students being in the school itself. So we're actually reducing the impact of a septic system now by moving it and modernizing it, and we're infiltrating as required under the aquifer protection district. We must infiltrate because we are above the 15% coverage. It's pretty obvious it isn't existing, but we're allowed to do this under the guise that we can put everything into the, back into the ground that comes off this site. It's very good soils.
Before you, I'm trying to just catch up on, years ago, it was the school.
Right.
And then it took it over for storage.
Yeah.
But at that point, you didn't come for an aquifer protection because it was under a percentage limit?
It was an existing use. No new percentage increase in...
No changes to the structure.
You didn't change the footprint.
Right. It's allowed use under the zoning bylaws, but we weren't changed, nothing was changed on the existing footprint as far as pavement.
Boy, that's, you know, that's really stretching it, because aquifer protection for a school has got to be a lot different than aquifer. I mean, I would have been worried back then that you have all this storage things. Who knows what stuff you're storing in there? It could, you know, and that would affect the aquifer.
Could you address that?
So I can't.
There was a concern that I had, and I'd mentioned it to you. You don't know who's bringing what in there, but you told me something very different. You're not like a regular storage facility.
We're not like a traditional storage facility here, whereas you have a roll-up door. People show up at any hours of the night and put whatever they want in there. Our facility is run on a strict basis. We're open nine to five, Monday through Friday, nine to two on Saturdays. Every single person that comes into our facility is let in by an attendant, and the attendant stays on the site with them at all times while they move all of their things in. And our own contract for the storage facility requires no hazardous materials, no gasoline, none of the things that would be a concern or ever to be stored.
Automobiles won't be in there.
No, no.
But there are now.
Well, the cars in the parking lot that are parked there.
Where is the park, where is the parking lot on this plan?
The, it's the existing pavement to the left-hand side of the west.
Okay, that was existing pavement.
Yes, that was existing pavement that was there for the last, you know, the building was erected in 1960, and it handled cars being parked there every day for students, you know, throughout the year for all of this time. So, and we're not asking to increase the parking area or anything to that effect. We are strictly building three storage buildings that will be used for household storage alone. So, and again, I can't stress enough that there will not be any hazardous materials.
One of the problems I have with this is we have to look for the future.
Yep.
You say you're going to do a good job, and I'm sure you will. You saw what the Joe Schmo down the street, and he says, put anything you want in there. How do we manage that?
I mean, we could put it as a condition on the approval of the special permit, record that with the registry of deeds, and if they don't adhere to that, then you have the full authority to go after them, you know, with the full authority of the law.
That's putting a lot of money on the town that we don't have to, of course.
Yes, I mean, that's, okay, anyway, that's one of the concerns I have here is, is that, you know, you run a great operation, you make sure, okay, that's, that's fine, but we have to look for the life of that property and, and making sure that the aquifer is protected no matter who goes in there. So, so I have to, we have to be worried about that.
We recently did something similar to this, within the last year.
Well, yeah, Silverback Construction, which is located at Cheryl's Way, just...
They had hazardous committee.
They have concrete forms, and they're parking trucks inside and all of that. I think that they, you know...
We went through an awful lot with them of how are we going to mitigate it?
I have the minutes for both of those. I reviewed them through and through. I don't think that any of the concerns that you had for them apply to us. We're not, you know, storing any of the same things, you know, and as I said, the vehicles that are stored there currently are typically, they're RVs. Most RVs and boats are the standard. We have a few vehicles, and honestly, I'd be completely transparent with the board, if it made you feel better that we don't put any automobiles and limit it strictly to recreational vehicles and, you know, boats, I don't think we'd have a problem with that. You know, I'd be open to something to that effect, and, you know, we could put that on as a special condition.
I think if we, if we condition the hours and the attendance that he...
We just adhere to our own policies.
You know, if that's in our conditions, I think we're protecting ourselves for the future, that the next operator would have to do the same, because to me, that's a big deal.
I want to hear more of what's going to happen to this water. That's all we're going to do. Okay, so currently, I mean, there's a, it's paved, and it goes out towards road. The water flows very nicely south to north, actually a wave until it gets to a point where it flows towards the river, and there's a wetland system about 100 feet wide between the, what is the Westport River coming out of Lake Nookocho, and the edge of the riverbank, which is not very wide at that particular location. The requirement, it says, you have to infiltrate all the stormwater runoff on site. So we're increasing this thing, like I said, by this amount of area. We have to infiltrate that, because it's part of the conditions under the aquifer protection. You go above the 15%. The only way you can get a special permit is by infiltrating all the water back into the ground that you're creating, well, creating, well, that doesn't infiltrate by itself. So that's what this has to do. We have to meet that requirement. Now, the planning board consultant will be the one who says, yeah, they are meeting it, because we're going to run the modeling and everything and say, okay, we need this X amount of square feet. The fortunate thing about this area, as I told the woman, is this is pretty much all gravel, so it infiltrates very easily. The bad news is, because it's gravel, you have to have five-foot separation between the infiltration and the groundwater itself. That's how the stormwater standards protect the aquifer. In other words, every, it's certain types of soils, they require a certain amount of separation, so there isn't a commingling of groundwater with water that's being infiltrated, stormwater. The treatment for the stormwater is required. You're supposed to take out 90% of all of everything that's flowing off-site, all the sediment, grass clippings, whatever it may have you. So that's going to be done with grass whales and vegetated buffer strips before the ponds, trap everything. We have a similar situation down at the Handy House, same thing. It takes care of all that. And so 90% of what's in the stormwater runoff, which is usually in the first inch of rainfall, will be taken out, and then when it goes for infiltration, none of that will reach the aquifer. That's what's required under the bylaws, what's required under the Massachusetts stormwater standards, is what's required in the site plan review.
I also think it's notable to point out that the land that we are working on here is all open grassland.
Yeah, this is...
We're not taking down any trees.
The tree line is the wetland.
That's where the playground is.
Well, the playground is where that infiltration pond would be.
Okay.
So this, the two buildings are directly in front, closest to 177, as you can see here. So those two...
Yeah, the ones that you've already excavated.
We prepared the site pad. It's about as far as it's gone. So, and then that rear building is, is the next phase, but, you know, we want to get the approval all simultaneously.
Last night's planning board meeting, they came up with, you guys were already doing too much, and Ralph was actually mentioned. Maybe we should take this to Ralph.
They stopped. There was some work being done to the front of the property, but it was stopped right away.
As soon as we were notified that...
When I notified Mr. Long that it was in an aquifer protection, so he stopped. Nothing went any further.
And that was what triggered us?
The machinery came off the property. Everything came off the property that triggered it to come here.
Originally, we were going before the planning board. We had everything geared to go towards the planning board. Sean and I have been working on this for well over a year at this point, and we came to the discovery that we were in the aquifer, you know, unbeknownst to us. It was a mistake, absolutely, but as soon as we found that out, we pivoted and came before, and made an application to come before the board because of the fact that we were in the aquifer. That was, and we felt that we needed, as I mentioned before, the special permit prior to moving forward with any other plans, because of the concerns and everything else. You know, we wanted to address the board and answer those questions and make sure that...
But you were going to do this without a site plan.
What do you mean?
With all the stuff that you're doing there, you were going to do it without a site plan approval.
Absolutely not.
Well, then why didn't you apply to them?
Well, because we were in the process of finalizing the plan for the, the only...
You were building it all already.
All that has been done is grading. There's only been grading. There's nothing else there. It's been prepared.
Yeah, there's no foundation.
There's no foundations.
I like lines all the time.
No, it, we prepared grade as we were moving towards the planning board. I mean, as you all know, the winter comes in, and, you know, we're on tight construction deadlines, and had everybody lined up. We didn't realize that there was an aquifer here, or we were within the district, and as soon as we were, we pivoted. We would have been before, we We would have been before, we were on par to go before the planning board in August. But as soon as we realized we were in the aquifer, it completely changed our plans.
Okay.
Because of the fact that we have to infiltrate 100% of the water, because of the change and, you know, all of the concerns that come along with being in the aquifer. So we were just, you know, preliminarily grading the site for those two front pads. We haven't done anything in the, you know, northeast corner over there. Again, that was all open grassland before, so there hasn't really been anything.
Actually, part of this storage building is going to be over what is existing pavement right now. And one of the other concerns to come here tonight in regards to this is you want to hear, I'm sure they want to say, the butters and concerns and things that we can or cannot address or may address very easily.
Absolutely.
Uh, the concerns because it's something we can incorporate in the site plan rather than coming here and hearing two different things. They would be notified, I believe, most of, I don't know who's here, but most people who would be notified at site plan review also to express concerns. But the concern would be, you know, if, if they, if you came here, you had the site plan, and all of a sudden somebody wanted to appeal it, you could have easily taken care of it before, before, before you got to that point.
Public comment, so you're rather, you're trying to get the public comment ahead of time.
Yes. And your comments as well from the board, get the input on that.
So if we were to approve this with conditions pending approval for site plan review.
Planning, I would condition it more broad and just say.
Well, if there, are there, is there a minimum, like, is there, well, we're going to make this small change here with that. If they asked us to decrease, I would look at it this way. Any increase in impervious area would be a condition that you would put that we would have to come back to this.
Because it would be more detrimental.
More detrimental.
Anything that the plan.
If they said, no, you can't put this 8200 square foot building here and we had to remove it from the whole site plan whatsoever, I don't see how that impacts what your decision would be for the impact, obviously. I was just only asking that.
No, no, but that's our, that's our thought here is that if you approve it as we see, the only thing the planning board is going to do, like, we're already at the strictest level possible. We're saying we are infiltrating 100% of the water. We are doing everything that we possibly can to comply with the bylaw. So if the planning board comes back and says, you need to change this or that, it would just be a reduction in the size of whatever we're doing. We can't, it is impossible for us to go any further with the infiltration, with the groundwater, with all of those things. So any conditions that you put upon that would be in addition. And if the planning board comes along and says, well, you need to add this, this and this, or we have public comment and that changes A, B, C and D, it's all going to be in the other direction as opposed, we cannot go more detrimentally. You know, we're essentially coming before you with a maximum plan. And if we have to step it back, we will, but we wanted to come before you with everything and then back off from there.
Can you run through the, the special permit requirements in, in the aquifer protection district?
Okay.
There's a bunch of things that say, you know, you can't store pesticide, all that.
Yeah, so under section.
All the thing under the use regulations.
Right, under the use regulations, this is obviously, it's not obvious, I shouldn't say that. This is a use that is permitted in the aquifer protection district, providing you meet all the standards under 6.2.2B, which I've, rather than listed everyone individually on the plan, I just made a caveat statement on this plan that said we will meet all the requirements of 6.2.2B as listed in the zoning bylaws.
Well, good, now tell me how you're going to do that.
Well, basically, because, okay, for instance, if we go through each one, if you want to go through each one.
Yep.
The manufacturer uses disposal of toxic materials, that's not going to happen.
Then how do you manage that?
As he mentioned before, this is a household storage and they have attendance that will be monitoring.
Okay.
I mean, we're also not a manufacturing facility.
Yeah, we're not, yeah.
And if that was to become a thing, it would have to require a change of use, which would therefore require, and then they would have purview at that point to make comments.
I think further down, you're going to be, that's where you're going to, your concerns are going to come in further into this list, so I'll get to that.
Yep.
Sean, excuse me, but you just pointed out a minute ago about, you, you, you put that.
Caveat.
Uh, where is it?
It's on the, in the notes.
Okay, uh.
All uses to be in performance with the section 6.2.4 use regulations of the town of Westport bylaws.
Okay, just 6.2.4.
Well, the next one down is all development must be the requirements of the planning board. All full development, this is number one, shall meet 6.2.5.
Right.
Which is all the requirements of the special permit.
Yeah, so it's not all of 6.2, it's just.
Well, 6.2.4 is A, B and C, which is.
6.2.4 is, is our job, 6.2.5 is the site plan job.
Yes.
Right, right. There's two different sections here and we're saying we're going to meet those requirements rather than, I mean, we could have listed everything that we shall know. But it's easier to just list.
Or you could have said 6.2 and everything.
Okay, yeah, I guess we could have because one of the things about 6.2 is there are allowances that if you meet, like, for instance, if you go over 15% and you have to meet this requirement and that will be determined by the consultant at the planning board, actually. So we will, and that will be on the site plan review. So we're trying to cover all the basics here. If you want us to add a note or be more specific on the note, I don't have a problem with that.
You want us to keep going?
Go on.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so where we're up to?
Number two, car washes.
Car washes, laundry mats, junkyard, storage, disposal of solid waste. Obviously, we're not running, there's not going to be a landfill here, there's not going to be a storage of hazardous waste or that type of thing. Storage of animal nourths. I don't know if you need to go any further on that one, we're not, there's no animals going to be here. Storage of commercial fertilizers within a structure design, rent, generation. Some of these have caveats where you can do it if you meet this, the NRCS guidelines or you meet the guidelines required under DEP hazardous waste rules, which I would recommend that you take those out at some point in the future. But you, you can meet those. That's why we're saying this is meet all of them rather than specifics. Removal of soil, loam, gravel or dirt within four feet of the historical high groundwater, that's not going to happen. Uh, can't happen because under stormwater guidelines and everything, you have to go through the board of health and other things to do such a thing. That's not being planned. These are on slab grade, they're not foundations. And the groundwater was determined at 76 inches, which is basically six feet, three inches in the ground.
Okay.
So that would be a heavy excavation, so that's not being planned. Uh, but it does allow, you know, 45 to four feet, it's an installation of utility works, roadway construction. So utilities, if we're doing water lines, would have to be four feet in the ground for frost. I don't think that's the plan. This is a storage facility, not a restaurant or something along those lines, so. Uh, impervious cover of any lot, and this is the 15% rule, including buildings, structures, driveways, parking areas, gravel areas, parrot, et cetera, that exceed 15% of land area or 2,500 square feet, which is greater, we're obviously, we're above that. Uh, unless a system for artificial recharge of precipitation is provided and that will not site result in the degradation of groundwater quality and exempting land primarily used for agricultural or horticultural purposes. Well, it's not agricultural or horticultural purposes, but that's what we're doing. We're infiltrating the precipitation from the site as required under that section of the bylaw about, because we're above 15%, we're above 15% pre-existing before the bylaws even passed. Sewer treatment facilities, with the exception of individual sewer disposal systems. We have, we have approval for a new system, which is about 15 times smaller than the one that was for the school. That was obviously more detrimental, that type of flow, actually, within the 200-foot riverfront area, within 100-foot buffer, within the 25-foot, no activity zone. Stockpiling disposal of snow or removes highways and streets on site of the aquifer protection that contains sodium chloride, calcium chloride, chemical can treat it. So we can't use chemical treatments other than sand on this site for ice and snow removal. We can't.
And you can't store it if.
Right, you can't store a giant pile in a giant coned building. Truck or bus terminals, it's not a truck or bus terminal. Disposal of solid waste with the exception of brush and stumps, which I think should be removed, but that's something else. But that's not planned, obviously. Storage of liquid hazardous materials as defined in the Massachusetts laws, chapter 21E. And we're all familiar with 21E and the monitoring of, environmental monitoring that's required. Except, you know, so none of that's being planned and it will be monitored again by the applicant. Storage of liquid petroleum products of any kind except those incidental to normal household use and outdoor maintenance of the heating of a structure, which means I guess you can have an under, you can have an underground oil tank or propane tank, but you can't have.
Which we don't, put that out there. No underground storage tanks.
Industrial uses that discharge processes, again, this is not a manufacturing or industrial facility, so we're not going to be doing that. Floor drainage systems discharging to the environment, there will be no floor drainage systems on this and not required. Storage of road salt, this goes back to de-icing and the plowing. So all those conditions are being met and stated for in that, in that note on the plan. As far as section C, the use is set forth. Under the special permit, only are subject to the approval of the granting authority, that would be you, obviously, such conditions that they may attach to their approval and subject to section 5.2.4. All commercial industrial activities permitted in the underlying district, this is permitted in the underlying district, a storage facility. All such commercial industrial uses may be constructed and operated in such a manner as to discharge wastewater except normal sanitary waste to subsurface disposal system. So basically, we're just using, the amount of flow from a half a dozen employees on this site is very limited as opposed to 500 students that were there previously. Uh, replacement rehabilitation modification of pre-existing non-conforming uses, just which is what this is, in accordance with section 5.2 of the Westport zoning bylaws. We do meet required zoning use and so we're allowed, allowed to do that. But the special permit granting authority, you shall not grant an approval unless it shall find that such expansion shall not increase the risk to contamination of groundwater. So we have to show to you that we are not increasing or anything detrimental to the aquifer protection or any other resource area on the site, basically. Uh, and that is the plan and that will be determined by two things. One, the conservation commission has to look at this. That will be basically after all the calculations and everything because they don't have a consultant to look at all the stormwater grant. The application fee that the applicant will give to the planning board, they will look at all these things and they will make recommendations or say they don't meet it, they do meet it. At that time, that's when the planning board will approve it because it does meet the requirements of the site plan review, which is basically echoes and mirrors these requirements here. And they can put special conditions on it also. You know, they can say you have to paint the building blue or something. They have the ability to do that because it is a special permit on their end also. Uh, I don't know if you want to go any further.
That's it.
Okay.
So you're upgrading the, you're upgrading the septic system?
It's a, well, upgrading, downgrading.
Upgrade is downgrading because you're going from 500-person flow to about a half a dozen-person flow. So you're going to a septic system that basically is probably 30 by 50 to a, you know, nine by 20.
I mean, in terms of aquifers, we're upgrading in that regard. I mean, it's a lot, it's a brand-new system and.
So you're putting a new, brand-new system.
Brand-new system approved by the board of health that's already.
So there needs to be denitrification.
No, because it's an existing.
It's actually an upgrade and you're actually putting less nitrogen in the ground. Because the existing system, which was built some 60 years ago.
Yeah, 1960.
Is probably sitting in the groundwater. I don't know that for sure, we haven't dug it up, but I would almost bet the groundwater termination.
If you're only 72 feet down.
It might not be, I shouldn't make it as.
Close.
But it's probably close or near close.
Because at that point, when they put the system in, the, these regulations weren't in effect.
There was no, there was no sanitary bylaws at all in the state of Massachusetts in 1960. You could do what you want.
The system was put in in the 70s as far as I know, but.
Was it, oh, it was replaced in 70s?
They upgraded it when, and Lenny Potter was actually the one that put it in.
So, so this will meet all the requirements of title five, which we feel is an up, and obviously 100 times smaller, so it's an upgrade in that way. We're not trying to say that that makes up for adding 32,000 square feet of additional area, but that will be made up by the infiltration of the water as required.
All right, so you're going to be having two big areas that are now going to be impervious, they're going to be, they're built, building.
Yeah, basically.
So can you, can you go back into detail about how you're going to manage the, the stormwater?
Okay.
I mean, I know you talked about it, but.
All right, so.
You know, exactly how you do that.
Highway is the highest point on the site. Everything flows actually off the highway. This is elevation 61, 60, 59, 76, flows in this direction.
Okay.
And towards this direction because obviously the Westport River, which is over here, drains a whole, you know, catch basin, sub-basin of drainage, you know, the late Nokachoke, which is artificially created. Uh, and this wetland system that's around it that we can't touch takes into account all the stormwater that runs off this site currently right now. What you have to do before or while you're doing, or while you're doing development and after development is your post-development flow has to be reduced by 20% over your pre-development flow. So there will actually be less water coming off of the site.
Yep.
Into these wetlands areas and on top of it, we'll be infiltrating it all.
Right.
What about the other way? What about the other side? Nothing's going to change on the flow this way. We're directing all the material, all, right now, it can go this way and there's no controls whatsoever. Not going to push any water that way? No, we're not pushing any water that way, it's all coming this way.
Only the newer, only the new proposed stuff and anything to the east of the school, which already naturally flows east, which will be caught by both basins.
Yeah, there's a number of roof drains that just spill out onto the ground right now. And every one of these little RDs you see on the plan all around, basically are just spilling out of the ground with no treatment whatsoever.
Okay, so what's going to happen with them and at the, and the new buildings?
With the existing roof drains or the ones?
No, with your new proposal, how is all this water going to be, going to be managed?
It's going to go into two ponds, right?
It's all going to be pitched into the infiltration areas, ponds, they're open ponds.
You say you're going, it's going to, so you're going to have a catch pond or you're going to have?
Yeah, it's almost like a detention pond. You see detention ponds, these are not detention ponds, infiltration ponds. You have to infiltrate a, basically, a storm event over the entire day within 24 hours. So within 24 hours, you go from, I don't know, let's say it's three feet of water to zero. And it goes down, it doesn't overspill. Now, if there's a 500-year storm, you have to have a requirement to overspill into the existing swell like everything else does. You're not going to be able to infiltrate eight and a half inches in three hours.
Right, right. And all the storm drains go where from the buildings?
All, they're all going to be directed towards the infiltration.
They're all going to be directed towards the catch basin.
Yes. This water that comes off here will be, will continue to go runoff here. Everything that now spills off from the school, those roof drains all on this side will be coming, heading towards in this direction.
Okay, so you reroute those.
No, we're including.
The ones on the west side will remain as they are and follow the current flow, but anything on the easterly border, which already pitches to the east.
Because the only thing, the only way to fix that would be to raise this grade two feet.
Yeah.
And you couldn't really do that.
And then we're disturbing the pavement and all of that, which we would rather not do.
The requirement is off-site drainage must be 20% reduced from pre-development, post-development.
Right, right.
So the filtration ponds, they hold a bunch of water.
Right.
And then they slowly drain.
They go straight into the ground.
So it's, it's good it's not running directly into the river, isn't it getting there eventually anyway?
It's being, I don't want to say, I don't.
And I'm just asking for curiosity, not for.
Well, what's happening is, you know, along these things, there's grass swales that, you know, with check dams that stop the sediment from accumulating at the bottom of the pond and therefore making them non-infective. Yeah, it's going into the water just like it is now. If water falls on this grass right now, it goes, it goes right into the ground.
Right.
We're just directing water that comes off here now untreated, just goes. Right now, it just goes wherever it wants to go. I don't know if it's trickling through, there's no controls coming off here. There's a number of roof drains that, like I said, just spill onto the pavement and that just goes somewhere untreated. Our requirement under this bylaw and the Massachusetts stormwater standards is to treat all that stormwater.
Right, you treat it so that it infiltrates down to the ground and.
Right, so it's, the whole idea is an aquifer recharge district, you want to recharge the aquifer.
Right.
Comment, are you all set with the water path?
Yeah.
My, my concern, in your existing storage facilities, you told me it's going to be operated the same way, nine to five and so forth. The, does the clerk or whoever you want, what do you call you?
Tenant. Yeah, we call them an attendant.
Yeah, the attendant, okay. Are they trained in any way to, to recognize what?
We have, yeah, we have policies and procedures that are in place for every new attendant, you know, and how they intake a customer, what they can store. I mean, when we take in a new customer, first thing they do is go over, you know, what we can store there. It's right in our contract, you know, limiting what can be stored there. Something that came to my mind when we were sitting here is, I mean, if, if we want to be extra thorough, which makes sense in this situation, we could put a sign right when you drive in that none of, no, 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 just to be even additionally thorough, you know, and put that out there.
It's like saying, don't go above 45 miles.
Yeah, I know. Well, we can only do, you know.
Doers are going to do, the fact that it's manned from nine to five, you don't have people living in there like.
Absolutely not. No, and we're different than any other facility in the area as far as I know there are, everybody else is 24-hour access.
Just going up on.
Is that a gated facility?
It's not currently, I mean, we've tossed around the idea of gating it, but again, the facility itself is locked. There's no way to get in and, and the only people that have 24-hour access are the, you know, people with RVs and boats and things like that. So they can get in and out with their trailers, but that's, outside of that, you can't get into the building.
The crossroad storage is like that, but they have gate.
Okay, they have a gate.
There's a little one on.
We have a gate at our, our main facility.
You have to, I don't think you can get in from outside. You have to, I don't think you can get in from outside.
Yeah.
And it's small, they're small.
On 177, our, our main facility at 519 is gated.
Yeah.
That, all those buildings are gated.
From your point of view, what's the benefit or not benefit of gating it?
I mean, it's, it's an added security, it keeps out anybody that doesn't belong, but in terms of security with the buildings, I mean, we have 32 cameras monitoring at all times, I can pull them up on my phone and show you right now, I mean, constantly, there's alarm systems.
It almost makes you like, oh, it's gated, what do I want to get in?
Yeah, it does kind of, and again...
It says, I want to get in there, versus like, oh, it's not gated, I'm gonna walk around, and there's nothing for me to take.
Exactly, you know, the only thing, the only benefit to the gate is, you know, keeping out people that don't have a key to the gate outside of that, you know, but in terms of getting up to the facility, I mean, I'll be, we'll be completely honest, when we bought the facility in 2019 or 2020, we had a problem with break-ins, and so we immediately, just from like neighboring, you know, whatever, people coming in, and immediately put up cameras, changed the lighting system, you know, upgraded everything, and knock on wood, it's been great ever since. So, I mean, we're, we pride ourselves on being very secure, very, you know, a high-end storage facility.
So from my point of view, you don't feel it's necessary to put that as a condition?
In terms of, of the aquifer and that, I don't think it has much of a benefit in that, I mean, if it would make the board feel more comfortable. We, we did talk about doing it at some point, but, you know, haven't needed it at this point, you know?
But it also stopped the wildlife, it would...
No, no, excuse me, wait a minute. You're not, no, we're not the one public yet.
Yeah.
I mean, a fence would keep wildlife from walking across, which isn't good.
Yeah, so it'd be a detriment.
Yeah.
What he's saying is, the only gate is on the, on the side of the north, north portion of this, which goes up to Union Ave. That's the only part that's gated, there's rocks on both sides, I mean, we have no intention of ever using that portion of the property, it's just pre-existing, but, you know.
Is most of the storage, people who store by the month, or is it a lot of your storage through your moving company where you're storing?
The moving company is actually not correlated with us, it's a relative.
Okay.
But, no, I mean, typically, most of our clientele are a monthly basis. I mean, our contracts are monthly basis. And even anybody that moves in with the moving company is on a monthly basis, so. No, nobody, I mean, long-term, in the sense of some people keep their stuff there for a while, but nothing, we're not signing a five-year lease or anything like that.
I, I just have a curiosity question. Where is the river, the, that's not Nokachoke, how do you say that?
Nokachoke, yeah, so...
That is Nokachoke.
Yeah, it basically, it's a strange thing, so you, obviously you know where Lake Nokachoke is on Route 6, with the confluence of 177 and the bend on Route 6, the real bend on Route 6.
Right where Rachel's Lakeside all over.
It flows under that road.
There's a dam, there's a dam?
Right, right, so that flows under the road, just immediately upgrading of this.
And then there's that building where the...
It's not titled.
Yeah.
I'll tell you that, it's...
Where the billboard is on Route 6, where they just changed all of that, that water flows through the woods in here, under 177, and then eventually gets into the Westport River, which is why, I mean, it is...
It's actually an approved detention pond right there on the corner of 177 and Route 6, that was allowed, that did not infiltrate and dumped straight into the river.
And you said that it's, and it's owned by Fall River, I mean, how...
The water rights of Lake Nokachoke, they own, they own everything above, one foot above the elevation of the dam, and they have a water line that runs up Route 6, there's a pump house right on the corner, brick, municipal building. It's supposed to send the water up into Fall River, should they needed it for an emergency. They've never used it, but they own the rights. There was another water grab by the city.
Wow.
And they own, they own the water rights one foot above the bank, from here all the way to the head of Westport, the river, the Westport River.
Wow, okay.
By Titcomb Brothers, by Forge Pond, that's all owned by the city of Fall River.
Yeah, this is just further upstream of where Titcomb and...
That's why you see, you see the bank of the river, and we're showing a line one foot off the bank of the river as the prop, quote-unquote, property line. It took all these things from Anno people.
You know, in your existing storage facilities, do you, is there any inspection by the fire department or anything like that that happens?
Well, so ironically, fire department used to practice for fires in the storage facility a lot of the time, because they shut all the lights off and could practice using the cameras and things, it hasn't happened in a few years, but, I mean, we do have regular fire inspections. Lieutenant Brisk has been made aware of these plans, he's seen these plans.
What do you mean by regular fire inspections? That's what I'm asking.
Was that you or me?
I mean...
Do they like annually have to certify you?
I mean, we don't, no, we don't have any annual requirement to do so, but, you know, everything is, is up to date in terms of, you know, we do our own, but, you know, what I thought, where I thought you were going with that question was inspections. I'll go one step further and say that we do inspect all of our units, on a, that's on an annual basis.
I'm looking at...
But by inspecting, you open them up and see what's in them?
Yep.
And double-check, make sure that they're not storing things like gas, lawn mowers, things of that extent.
We do that on, on either six-month or annual basis.
Yeah, Ralph had a point.
Yeah, this huge group, and that huge group, the bill of code doesn't require an annual inspection for this.
But it would be to have, well, like, you'd have a lot of angry, I mean, I know that you're not responsible for it, but you'd have a lot of angry customers if that...
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Well, again, you know, that's why we are double-checking and going in there on a regular basis, and making sure people aren't, you know, doing, that's what the issue with a 24-hour facility is, that turnover and people in and out, you know, someone lights up a cigarette standing in the hallway, we, that's why our attendants are on the premises at all times, to avoid things like that. And this, these new buildings are a little different than the ones that we have up the street right now, those, they're metal on the outside, but those are wood-framed, these are all steel construction, so they're even, you know, of a higher fire rating.
So you, you have a way to make sure that people aren't living in those facilities?
Absolutely.
Because they have to be in by five and can't get out until...
No, and you're, everyone is signing in, signing out, being led into their unit, their unit's locked by the attendant, the attendant is leaving the premises with them, you know, so people are not left.
Any other questions? I'll open it up to the public, so anybody want to come up? Name and address.
Not to speak in front of anybody so they wouldn't make...
Name and address. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
John Maduris, 44 Union Avenue.
Can you speak into the mic, and then name an address?
John Maduris, 44 Union Avenue.
Okay.
This is my property here?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing, so... This retention pond here, how close is it to my property?
It, it's required to be at least 10 feet off the property line.
10 feet, do you realize this is all wetland?
Yeah, there's wetland that goes...
How deep is this gonna be?
The way it's sized right now, it's about 25 by 50.
How deep?
Two and a half feet deep.
Two and a half feet?
Yes.
That's gonna hold off, that's gonna hold all this runoff from these roofs?
It's gonna infiltrate the runoff, yes.
I don't think that's gonna hold it.
It's gonna hold it to a certain point. In other words, it starts infiltrating as soon as it starts raining.
Then it's gonna, then it's gonna flood my property.
No, it's not gonna flood.
That section of the property is already wetlands anyway.
Yeah, this section...
That, that portion of the property is wetlands to begin with, but what Sean's saying is, any overflow...
It's gonna add to it.
I mean, the intention, the intention of the retention pond or infiltration chamber is to...
That's gonna overflow, like, this size roof, that's gonna overflow, I was a builder, that's gonna overflow, two and a half feet's not gonna be enough. This is all wetland, so all this water's gonna overflow into my property.
That's not your property.
Yes, it is.
That section...
This section is their property.
If it overflows, yes, it is.
Yes.
This, this portion...
I have a plot, I should have brought it.
This is you, here, right along this line, all the way down.
Yeah, and then it comes down, it comes down here.
See this? This is us. I mean, we're, we're standing here with the engineer that did the survey.
They're closed, right?
Yeah, they're closed, yeah. If you have a question, I mean, I...
I should have brought my plan.
Well, it'd be a...
Because I had a survey, I had a survey plan.
Yeah, and the school also has a survey plan, and this is straight off...
Mr. Lydgens, listen, I know this part, Mr. Lydgens bought an acre off of me.
Who's Mr. Lydgens?
To sell to the school, so they could increase their leaching field, which is here.
No, the leaching field is here.
Oh, it's here, in the back.
It's right here.
And then, this was the school, then that was the, whatever you want to call it, the basketball, the...
Yeah, the gymnasium.
Then you added all these little things there, and these things on, St. George, closed it down, they, then there was somebody else.
Montessori.
Montessori, yeah, they rented it for, well, I don't think they bought it, I'm not sure. But anyway, regardless, my, this is, my, my property goes at an angle.
It doesn't.
I'm positive.
I'm just as positive that it doesn't, I'm not trying to be an argumentative...
It's been there 47 years.
This property's been there since 1960, and before that.
But I know the plan, it does not go straight.
But the, the plan and everything is, has been in existence long before.
Okay, can we, yeah, can we, all right, time out, time out. That's a site plan problem, not an aquifer protection problem. So what you really need to do is you need to, when they go in front of the, of the planning board for, for this project, you need to be there with your plans, with your, with your deed to show property lines. If you, if you don't believe their property lines, that's the time...
And not the fact that it doesn't go straight.
Well, that's the time that you bring this up, is at the, at the site plan review.
I think there's a little confusion as to, I, I don't disagree that it doesn't go straight all the way across the river, it comes down in the angle point at the river, and he owns on, on the other side, I think that's where maybe some of his confusion.
I don't want anything beyond the stream, the stream goes all the way along.
This is the assessor's map over here, and it shows you not wanting that, so...
Once again, that's, that's not an aquifer protection, that's a site plan review, so...
I'm still concerned with what's gonna go in there, like you said.
Yep.
After he sells, once he sells it, he has no control.
In terms of the water?
Considering it's all wetland, what's gonna happen if something happens? Are these buildings gonna have sprinklers?
No.
So you have all these buildings, so how's that gonna affect my property? It's gonna burn all of this down, if that happens to burn, they'll never control this.
I mean, again, we're kind of getting off topic, but, you know, again, they're all steel construction, so they wouldn't, they're not gonna jump this, you know, we have a brick building there.
I'm concerned with what they're gonna put in there, because that's way too much storage area. And especially this one, which is so close to the wetland here, on my, on my property, I'm concerned with that.
I, and I'd be happy to stand on site, I'm sure my father would too, and, and talk to you about exactly what's being stored in there, and, and those sorts of things.
Yeah, with you, how about would you sell it?
I mean, who's, we have no intention of selling it, I'm...
That's today.
I understand that.
If I was to buy that, you, that from you ten years from now, I don't care what they put in there, I want them full, I have to pay that mortgage.
There's still the, the contingencies and everything that we're stating, that they would be putting on the site, that limit what can be...
You're gonna put something, you're gonna...
All of the things that we read into the record about what would be stored on-site...
I'm still concerned with this pond here, I don't think that's enough.
Well, so what, what you're saying is, you're worried that if this pond overflows, it's gonna flow into your wetlands. What we're saying is, is if this pond overflows, it's designed to flow into the river and then travel downstream. There's, it's very unlikely that it would go to the north.
How come you're allowed to put water into the stream, and I just did a $300,000 addition on my property, and I wasn't allowed to do that?
We're not, we're not putting water into the stream.
You could.
If we have a 500-year flood.
Yeah, right.
Like in 2010?
I mean, I, I don't know.
Were you there in 2000, were you there in 2010?
Yes.
Yes.
I actually went to school there, when it was Montessori.
My property flooded, because they...
Everybody's property flooded.
Yeah, it was...
95 flooded.
It was, in a sense, it was Fall River, but it was not, they didn't want, rewrote the flood, so they closed the, the gate. They opened the gate, rather.
Yeah, and dumped...
No water flowed down here.
Yeah, and...
It flooded everybody downstream.
But everybody got flooded.
Yeah, the, the Whittupon Pond had the same issue.
Exactly.
So...
Yes.
I'm concerned about that.
Okay, thank you. Next, name and address.
Well, I live there. My name is Kimberly.
Can you get up to the microphone?
Sure. I just have a question, could you repeat what you stated regarding area that will not be used? You, you mentioned, and I, I couldn't hear, no activity zone? Could you just repeat that?
Yeah, that's a reference, there's a policy at the conservation commission, and this is the flag wetlands line, it's the way it's the wetlands, have no activity within 25 feet of the wetlands. So this dash line you see that sneaks around, and see this?
So no activity beyond that dotted line?
That's correct.
From here up?
Yes.
All the way around.
Yeah, all the way around.
I'm just trying to get my bearings as to the location of the building.
You know where the septic system is in the grass? So the septic system is right here, the tree line is like right, goes right along the property, that's pretty much the problem. With that, with the yard, with the group. That building will be in the grass area.
This corner here?
Is gonna be 25 feet.
Is right on the, it's right on the line, outside that.
Yeah, 15, about 15 feet off your property.
Now, what happens with this whole area here, which this, this one they made the driveway is built up bit, but what, what's gonna happen, anything?
We have no intention of doing anything with, nothing in there whatsoever.
Access?
It's gonna stay off.
This is gonna stay as it is?
As it is right now with the bricks.
Nobody's gonna be driving in and out there, walking in and out there. Access from the road, sir, this right here?
Well, you have access onto the pavement now.
Yeah, access from 177, existing, access from 177.
So nothing is changing.
So then we go on the other side?
Just for those two southerly buildings.
Here, and it'll stop there, and then you have your approved septic here.
Yep.
Now, so this will all remain driveway, and then you'll have to access.
That will all stay existing.
From the rear.
Um, well, that's what this wraparound is here. This.
So this is access right near this.
That's.
Buffer zone area that you indicated.
Well, the buffer zone is here. This is the twenty-five foot no activity zone, so we'll do nothing in there. And then this is outside of the no activity zone.
And you say reduced, reduced after construction, the stormwater runoff is mandated. Did I understand that right?
Yes.
Twenty percent reduced after construction?
Yes.
Than it is currently right now.
Right.
Correct.
Yes, because right now there is no stormwater management whatsoever on this site, so we are adding stormwater management. To improve from where it was before. So your father's concerns about the water, we're we're mitigating that. We're trying to, trying to help. No, totally, I understand. I.
There's other concerns too, obviously, that's not for this forum regarding what we had started, security, the size of this rear building, which is huge. How many, how high is this building, by the way?
Uh, we believe, I mean, we haven't finalized the height on that, but I mean, we weren't planning to go higher than, you know, a standard. Like, if you're familiar with our other facilities, if you're going down one seventy-seven towards Sanford Road, on the left-hand side, there's a building right along one seventy-seven, about the height of that.
Across from the church?
Across from the church, exactly, exactly. It's not gonna be fifty feet high, it's it's, you know, in- interior ceiling height is less than ten feet. Yeah, it it's a single-story building.
They want it to be smaller now. The height will be smaller now.
Yeah, it doesn't have a pitch roof.
Pitch is gonna be less. It's not gonna be as high as that one.
You wouldn't even be, i- i- it's gonna be half the size of the height of the gymnasium at this point, so it'll be significantly smaller.
And only storage is is right down in this building? Only storage currently?
That's all.
That's the only activity.
It's storage. It it's storage. That's what the purpose of this, these additions are. Anything that we're putting on is storage.
I'm gonna give someone else a chance to speak. Thank you very much.
Next? Anybody else? Name and address.
Robert Kirby, serving there in Union Ave. What about the parking lot? I mean, right now, there's trailers there, there's cars there. What's to stop, you know, from Joe Schmo putting his car there and then doing work on it? I've already, I've already seen two sailboats, condemned sailboats, and then saw people chopping them up and hauling them away.
Yeah, we we put a stop to that. We, as soon as we were alerted to that, we stopped that. That was a customer that was renting from us that unbeknownst to us was doing that. As soon as we got notice, if you notice in the last two to three months, that hasn't been happening anymore, he just stores the boats and hauls them off.
What's to stop that from happening again?
The fact that we monitor it on a regular basis.
And then, you know, the the runoff. Go look into the Westport River. Our Westport River's polluted enough already, you know, it's like, I go Cohog and, and all Cohog beds are are going away. They're closing down gradually, quickly.
I mean, we're not doing anything that's gonna gonna damage that. We're we're mitigating the stormwater here and we're willing to limit, and as I mentioned to the board, we're willing to put a limitation on the fact that we wouldn't have any automobiles stored there and limit it strictly to campers and and boats. We are a storage facility, least impact in terms of of anything here, you know, limited access.
A boat still stores gasoline, well, I mean, something happens.
I mean, they're contained with the with the plugs typically in the back of them, so if something were to happen, you know, in that instance, but. I mean, we can't, w- w- we can't prevent everything from from happening, but we're we're doing everything we possibly can to.
You know, like I said, I've seen work being done.
No, and as I mentioned, we we put it, put a stop to that as soon as we were alerted to it.
So how how come you need to be alerted to it if there's always attendance on the property?
Well, we, as I mentioned, it's twenty-four hour access.
There's attendance, they already have, they already have attendance there for.
Yeah, yeah, but that's not, that's for the inside.
Inside.
Okay.
And this guy was coming in after hours and and doing this, and as soon as we became aware of it, we shut that down.
And it wouldn't help then to have a gate because he'd have a key.
He'd have a key anyway, so we'd be in that same situation.
Is there a gate like where you drive out to one seventy-seven so nobody can get in?
Right now, there's not, but we were talking about that. What is it? We we could, we could, yes, absolutely.
But if you gave everybody a key, that wouldn't help.
It it wouldn't help in terms of the people.
Well, if you ever open it up at a certain time, certain hours, then you shouldn't have a problem. You open up at eight o'clock in the morning, you open the gate.
No, well, so, but if you, if you have a camper and you store your camper with us, you have a key to the gate. So if you wanna come in at two o'clock in the morning and go to Florida, you.
They're gonna have to call somebody to come and open the gate.
But you could also, I mean, I I've seen other facilities that it really wasn't a key, it was more like a.
Yeah, exactly, a swipe card access.
Key fob then doesn't allow you to come in aft- after hours.
After hours. Yes, we we have talked about doing swipe access, that is an option.
Exactly, there's no really reason. I could pick it up their RV at two o'clock, I wouldn't have picked it up earlier.
Yeah.
To get it.
And I mean, again, if these are things that open the conversation, if it would make people feel more comfortable to have it gated and opened in the morning and closed at night, then that's something that we could talk about. And be open, be open to that.
Anybody else? No, hold on, Doug.
My name's Caitlin Oliver. I live at sixty-four Union Ave, so I'm the property on the opposite side of the Medares, just up here in the corner.
Okay.
Um, I agree, I have some concerns that are probably more focused for the planning board, once the actual arrangement comes up. The security, the privacy, the way that everything's gonna be addressed, um, but I am a little concerned just about.
Give us all your concerns, because because.
We we wanna know.
Well, I mean, even with this, it doesn't show any type of privacy plan, it doesn't address the lighting concerns, it doesn't address what's gonna happen.
Existing. Nothing, nothing on that side of the property is changing. You're you're set almost ten feet above grade.
I mean, with all due respect, none of that's even been addressed, so this property was a school up until twenty twenty-two. And the lights for the school were all warm, soft lights that were on like normal telephone pole style lights that you see on the highway or on regular roads. Since you guys have shown up, there's all LED lights that are now outward facing instead of inward facing. There's been no updates that match the other store facilities, like the addition of abrevieties or things to create privacy for the neighborhood. I understand that there's a a movement, when you're taking something over, you have to do things in stages, so I think we've all suspended our complaints for a little while, just to give everybody some room. I honestly anticipated it would come in connection with the further plan, because when you're making a plan for one thing, you would have a plan for all of it. Um, and I I think some of the things that Kim was raising about, you know, if cars are coming in here, this is where our properties are, so those headlights coming in, all of that stuff, it's not a concern until it is. And there are things that can get worked out, they just need to be addressed.
The one thing with the headlights situation. You're, if you're, if I'm wrong, you're saying.
I'm up here, yeah.
You're about ten to twelve feet above grade.
Yeah, come sit in my dining room and see how many headlights you can see.
All right, I know, I'm not, I don't.
All of the lights on the building, every single car that pulls in, people in the back.
If if arborvities in that section of the area would make you happy, I mean.
I think that conversation needs to.
We're very willing to work with everybody.
Maybe as a, as a group, the neighborhood needs to address the things that are there. I agree that that's more for the planning board as it moves forward. But when we're here and we're talking about the Aquifer District, there are still exemptions that need to be addressed. You know, I have to agree with Bob, RVs still store gasoline, they store propane, there are huge tanks that are sitting there. There are waste storage tanks underneath them, and there are people there all hours of the day, all hours of the night, doing things, making noise. It's not as simple as, oh, well, we have an attendant and we have rules. You're only one person, you're only a member of a staff, you can't control what every single person does on your property. And if you have twenty some odd RVs, campers, boats, and other things just sitting in the back lot, in what I would argue is the most, you know, reserved area, because it is along our property lines, it's not on the street front where if you're driving by, people are gonna see that. People can do some sketchy stuff back there. Before you guys took it over and it was an empty lot, we had a lot of instances where the police would have to roll through. Because people would go in the back and park.
And we had people that broke in, as you mentioned.
That's the spot where they do it, so if somebody is gonna disassemble a boat or do anything else, they're coming in the back and they're doing it in our backyards. And that's just a problem that needs to be addressed.
Understandable.
But if you're talking about agreeing to not have cars, because cars have gas tanks, then perhaps the limitation needs to be that none of those vehicles are being stored on this specific property, because they all have gas tanks, they all have propane, they all have generators, they have waste tanks, gray water tanks, all these things that could rupture or be disassembled in the backyard. You know, I, there's a lot of talk about storage here, but I think we're missing the elephant in the room, which is that there appears to be a commercial batting cage that's been going on in the gym as well. Uh, I was under the impression, and I I believe what we were told originally was it was a volunteer batting cage open to the police department here in town, who was doing some type of charity work with a little league team. That has since come to people being in the backyard, they're practicing in those fields, they come and go. There was like twenty-five cars in that lot before we left for this meeting today. Um, that's all headlights, that's all traffic that wasn't anticipated. With all due respect, has that been addressed? Is that permitted? Did we talk about this?
Fifty years with people coming in and out.
It was an elementary school with toddlers who left at two P M.
Through first, through.
And then they weren't there, and it's since been closed a long time.
It was closed for about two or three years.
There are use issues that I just, I think there needs to just be a little bit more transparency.
We're willing to be transparent, but this is the first.
Excuse me, sir, let her finish talking. Thank you, Ms. G, I appreciate that. The other issue that I I have is the beginning of the meeting was brought up with this idea that whether or not the board has the opportunity to take action here, whether you need to have the site plan review completed and come back. I believe Attorney Long is suggesting that there could be some type of approval contingent on those plans, but, um, I I believe what you suggested was as long as they came down on the risk level and not up, you didn't need to be involved anymore. With all due respect, I just, I don't think that.
I I can answer that. Uh, we can't do conditional approvals.
I'm, yeah, I'm really uncomfortable with the idea.
Either grant or reject, but when we grant, we can grant with conditions.
I would request, if nothing else, that perhaps this would be addressed with a continuance pending the outcome of the others, knowing that there needs to be a larger discussion with the things that the community is bringing up. I think it's very likely that all of those could be resolved and that some modifications or tweaks to this plan or the plan down the road could be agreeable to all of us if the concerns get addressed. If not, then we can have this discussion based off of what's outstanding and not agreed with the community. But I'm very uncomfortable with the idea that the board would agree to a plan that is not set in stone, that we don't have, I mean, we don't even have dimensions on these buildings. We don't know the heights, we don't know what they are, we don't know what the.
Okay, can I stop you right there for a second?
Absolutely.
We're here to discuss the aquifer.
Yes.
Not the height of the building. There are, obviously, there are a lot of concerns, and and those concerns are something that you bring to the planning board. And and because after they get done with us, they will go to the planning board for a site plan review, which is gonna look at everything. And then they have to go to the Conservation Committee to to, you know, to to get their approval. So this is like step one of three steps. Now, generally speaking, you go to the site plan review first and before you come to the. But they are separable. They are two separate and distinct functions. Coming to 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 the uh, the zoning board of appeals, who only handles the aquifer, is is allowed. But like I I told them before, if they make any substantial changes when they go to the site plan, that may impact, they they may have to then come back to us again to get an update on the on the aquifer. If in fact, any change that that was mandated by the site plan approval process affects the aquifer aspects of this.
Right, but that would also depend on the height of the buildings, the amount of runoff, the roof, the way that perhaps the gutters are structured, the way that this is actually getting put to the infiltration ponds as they're laid out. I'm not saying it's a no. I'm saying it sounds like there's a lot of stuff that needs to get worked out. And with all due respect, again, tying back into the way the bylaw is written, it says that it has to be tied to a permitted use. And at this point, we haven't really addressed whether or not the batting cages are permitted use, the type of storage, and exactly what storage is going to be permitted, so the special permit is tied to the use. The use is still a vague question, which needs to get hammered out, and what is in, what is not going to be there. So since all the pieces fit together, my request would simply be to table it, so we have a little bit more information. And hopefully, next time, if all of that stuff is worked out, you won't have a neighborhood full of people here objecting. You can put your approvals in and there'll be no nay votes coming for you.
And once again, we're gonna sort of round back again. We're here to discuss how the the square footage of what they wanna put in affects the aquifer, and that's.
Right.
That's what we do.
That is.
That's what we do. So, now, we are really, we are very concerned about what goes in those things.
Right.
Because that affects the aquifer.
Yes.
How high the building is, got nothing to do with this.
No.
There's a lot of these things that are site plan specific and not aquifer, but certainly aspects of what's stored.
Right.
We're very, very concerned about.
Yes.
But.
So my concerns are raised under one, two, six, and eleven of the special features that were discussed earlier in six, two, four, B, one, two, one, two, six, and eleven. And then tying back to six, two, four, C, which is that the special permit requested is contingent on all commercial and industrial activities that are permitted within the underlying district.
Mm-hmm, yes, and it's, these are, these are permitted activities.
There's almost nothing that's not permitted in the commercial district.
Right, yes.
But, you know.
Matching with.
Recycling.
Right, with the propane tanks and the things I'm raising with the number one.
Yes.
Those are my concerns. I I'm very comfortable that everyone is vetting them. I just wanted that to be on record.
Yeah.
I'd also like to say that I I think they can be resolved, and I think that the concerns are more just making sure that the little things that come with having one of this in your backyard get adjusted. And that's not for the aquifer, that's probably for planning, so.
I mean, we would be happy to, if I may, I I apologize for cutting you off before, I just, I was trying to keep up while we were going through, and I I do wanna make that note. I didn't mean to cut you off. We are happy, and and our neighbors across up at the other facility and across, we are on top of it. And, you know, had we known these concerns ahead of time, we would have called a meeting with you guys before we came in. This is just the first time we've heard about it. You know, we can, we'd be willing to talk about putting up, you know, arborvities, fencing, mitigating the light, you know, changing colors, things like that. He's an electric contractor, so, you know, we put in all the lights to limit the riffraff that you were talking about, having people come in and out of there. And like I mentioned to the board, as soon as we changed the the lighting scheme and upgraded the security, it's limited. So, you know, but I totally understand not wanting to have lights coming through your backyard, and and we'd be happy to work with you on that.
Well, you also mentioned that you were coming here preliminarily to get some of this out of the way, so I think a lot of us are bringing it up, knowing that it may not be on your plate.
Right.
Because of their requests, um, but.
And and I, no, this is actually benefit, you know, uh, in a lot of cases, I would have cut people off because it's, it's not our job to manage the site. But it is, certainly impacts him.
Yes.
So hearing all of your complaints, whether they're about the aquifer or not, is beneficial to the whole process, because then he'll be able to modify his plans before he gets to the site plan.
Absolutely.
I think that's the best way to address it. I think that's what all of us would make, so.
And the site plan will be more aggressive than this.
Far more.
Uh, if I may, uh, again, to address the concerns, uh, the lighting and landscaping and that type of thing is all part of the site plan review, and they make recommendations or they make conditions on the approval of, and there's a big push, and it's come in the last few years, of always having downward lighting and that type of thing, and that's a requirement under the site plan review. So those concerns that you have, and and I encourage you to show up at the.
Yeah, I I think we'll work on it.
Yeah.
That's not my concern, I just brought it up.
I think the applicants, again, you go through a three-step process. You'll get notified at the site plan review, you'll get notified at Conservation Commission, and all these things will all be hashed out, and I'm not sure if everything gets perfect. Usually, if everybody goes away upset, then it's the perfect solution. But I don't know, you know, if everything can be addressed or everything can be addressed or those type of things, but I think the intent of the applicant is to do that. The concern is, you know, we don't wanna do, put, get all these plans and then come into here and say, you know, you say, okay, no, and they say no, and now we've kind of just spun the wheels in the mud, I think.
Come up and introduce yourself, where are your addresses?
Hi, I'm Jimmy Long. Uh, basically, some of you that know, don't know who I am, I've been in this town over fifty years as a living here and also, um, my contracting firm's here, my storage is here. And basically, I pride myself in my developments. On the lighting you're talking about, we haven't got to it because of, if you go up the street, um, my plaza, the storage that I have, it's all downlighting. I'm an electrical contractor, I deal with it all the time with banks. Um, when we do banks, uh, they're in the communities and there, there's a lot of houses around them. And we always have to do the downlight, and I always change it. They come up, and this, I changed it fifteen years ago, not a poise it, Marion. I'm, I'm, neighbors I wanna get along with. Um, I pride myself on my storage. I run a really tight ship. Uh, twenty years in this town with my storage, I've never had a complaint. I've never had an issue with the police department, okay? Fire department, like he said, I used to use the fire department, let them use my facility for training at any time. So I'm gonna address your concerns. When we leave here, we'll talk outside. Anything I can work out with you guys, I will. So I just wanted to tell you who I was. Um, this is my, uh, my baby, I bought it. We're expanding the storage. My storage is run nine to five, one D to Friday, nine to two. I run my storage very tight. I used to do U-Haul's work for over fifteen years, so I learned a lot of things not to do in storage. The way they run their facilities, I don't wanna run their facilities, they're twenty-four hours. Twenty-four hour facilities bring the stuff that you're talking about. Brings a bad element, brings, uh, drugs, brings stolen property, prostitution, okay? And I say that to people, they look at me with two heads. I go, it's crazy. My facilities are run really, really tight. Like he said, I do camera systems, that's another part of my business, my, they're state of the art. Hey, the issue that you brought up with the with the gentleman, we caught it on camera. And first when we found out about it, soon as I saw it, I went up to him, I said, either don't do it again, or get your stuff off my property. I nipped it right away, okay? So your concerns will be addressed. Um, I wanted to just stand up and and basically tell you how my facility is run. I pride myself. You put your stuff with me, you get it back the same way. And the way we run it, my attendance, like my son was telling you, people come in, we go, we unlock their units, they do their business, we keep an eye on what they're doing, then when they leave, we lock their units, they have to sign in and sign out, okay? The, uh, the traffic with the, you know, the the RVs, usually it's slow, once in a while they'll go out late night. If I have to put a gate on up there, I will put a gate that'll, and if I have to mitigate it to have the gate not work at certain hours, that's a quick way, we just shut it down, there's no lights. The back road, we're never touching that. I've already actually talked to the other neighbor, I was with you guys, um, when you're driving out. I said, I'm never gonna use it. Yeah, I said, I'm never gonna use it. You've never seen me use it. I locked those gates, it stayed locked. I'm not coming into that street, I don't want, I don't wanna affect you, you got dogs and stuff. Never gonna happen. The gate's staying locked. I could have opened it up and had traffic coming through, not happening, okay? Because I I feel for you. I don't want, you got a beautiful piece of property, that's the way I wanna keep it. So that's me, I just wanted to come before you. You didn't want me to come up. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to say one last thing in regards to the RVs. We've been storing RVs, boats, all of these things for well over twenty years now. And in those twenty years, knock on wood, we have never had an instance of a leak, never. And again, we monitor these things regularly. I can't sit here and tell you that it'll never happen, but we do try to keep the, you know, types of equipment and materials and RVs that are kept there of a higher caliber. And I do realize that some of the stuff right there that's there now might be lower. Maybe the stipulation that we put is that nothing older than fifteen years old can be stored there, so that we can assure that it is up to date, you know, clean, no rust, no rot, things like that. And like my father just said, you know, we wanna work with you guys and make sure everybody's happy and, you know, comply with the board. So we're really not trying to be abrasive whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the board?
Do we, do we have a list? Can you talk about what can be stored there? Is that available to us? To see what the contract is of what is allowed to be stored there and not?
Um, I I could provide that, but I can assure you that it's everything that's listed in the bylaw. There's none of the items that are of concern here.
I would just think that it would be, you know, a good idea.
We could, we can provide a a list of.
Well, what what we're concerned about are things that affect the aquifer, and that's what's in.
Yeah.
No pesticide, no gas, no petrol, you know, uh, no manure, no.
Yep.
You know, all the things that would affect the aquifer, you know, you know, if you wanna store, you know, you know, microwave oven, then.
Yeah. But we're not putting, you know, gasoline and, you know, any type of acids or anything of that nature.
Right, it's chemicals that we're worried about getting into the ground.
Absolutely.
It it was brought up, it for one of the conversations, in one of the conversations that the batting cages were not permitted, Ralph, are they permitted? Like, cause I, when it was said. Because I, when it was said, I said, I've been taking Little League teams there for quite a while already.
We did, we did go for the, the change of use at the time. But, you know, it's, it's batting cages now and that's as it is for now. But as we pointed out, the intention is to remain a storage facility.
I think you'd like to speak again. You need to come up to the microphone.
You need to come to the microphone so everybody can hear you.
I run my facility pretty tight. When stuff's coming in, we've turned stuff away. Lawn mowers, propane bottles, we don't take them in, take them back out. We've caught stuff coming in, sometimes somebody brings mold in. Whoa, can't come into the facility. Those buildings that are gonna go up, I forgot to tell you, there's only two doors. There's one door in this end and one door in that end. That's it. And then all the roll-up doors are inside, it's all climatically controlled. So it's very, very secure. So getting back to your, getting back to what you're talking about, as people are getting unloaded and stuff, my attendants are walking around and watching what's coming in. So, addressing the concerns of the board, for the most part, I think we do a pretty good job. And then, you know, another thing that we do, every morning and every night, they gotta walk the facility. Every morning have to go in, walk through all the facility, they check all the stuff, making sure there's no spills, nothing coming out of the units. If there is something, we pop the locks. And I always have two people go to there and check it out. So, addressing your concern, we do the best of our ability watching what comes in to the, to the facility.
Okay. Not that's really our, our purview, but what's the, you're saying it's a storage facility, but you have a batting cage?
Well, the, so when we bought the property.
Yeah, it's not a, that's.
No, no, I, I told, just to explain, when we purchased the property, as somebody mentioned, you know, you gotta cover the mortgage, we had to build out the storage facility and bring in, you know, people to rent those units. So right now, this section of the building here is the storage. The gymnasium, there was a police officer, as she mentioned, Vic Medina, who coaches baseball, who approached us and said, hey, I'm looking for an area to be able to put a batting cage in. And so, given the circumstances and, you know, and income from that, we have permitted him to do so as he is right now.
So it's in the interior of?
It's in the interior of the building. I mean, as she mentioned, you know, sometimes the kids go outside and they play basketball in the, you know, in the area between the two buildings. But, you know, outside of that, it, our lease with him is for the interior portion. We've allowed him to play basketball, you know, if kids want to go outside and.
Roger, I only brought it up because I didn't want him to think that this guy was doing something illegal.
No, no, not, not at all. We're, we, you know, we, we did do that originally. We got the, you know, permission from the necessary.
Yeah, once again, that's not an aquifer.
No, no, I know, but I'm happy to answer any questions, whether they're applicable or not, so.
It is an allowed use.
Yeah, within the, I mean, as Sean pointed out, within the commercial district, there's a lot of allowed uses.
Like almost anything.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yes.
And of those allowed uses, I'd say that we're, you know, the least detrimental to, to the area.
Right.
Right. Okay, if there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I make a motion to close the hearing.
I guess that's a first and a second.
Yeah.
Discussion, all favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. All that means is now we will discuss it and make a decision. If we have any questions, we will ask it of you, but you can't offer any more information, you know, without, without being asked. Again, and I will ask you some questions. Because overall, I think the aquifer protection part of it is, is reasonable. I'm still concerned about how, for the life, you know, for eternity, how we make sure, and I'm sure, you know, I mean, you're very, you know, upright as far as, as how you manage, but when you sell this twenty years to now to somebody else who isn't as forthright, how do we control that? So, what I'm more concerned about is, is if we approve this, what kind of safeguards can we put on this to make sure that it remains this way for, you know, for the life of the, of the property?
Am I?
Go ahead, you can answer.
So, I mean, again, we could put a stipulation on there that anytime there's a deed transfer, that they gotta come before the board.
Well.
You're allowed to put any conditions on this as you want. So if that was a condition that you wanted, that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of, of how would, how could we, and I'm, I'm struggling here. What kind of, of a deed restriction or?
Any deed transfer would require the approval of the zoning board of appeals. So if we go to sell it. If you put a deed restriction on there, under the special permit, that any transfer of deed to a new owner, we would require a zoning board of appeals approval. And so the next owner would have to come before you and give you guys the very same assurance that we have. I mean, we have no intention of, I, I understand, everybody, it's a business, you know, you never know what's gonna happen. But at that time, the next guy that comes in needs to come here and do the same thing that we are.
I think the issue here is that if it does change, and I mean, we're taking them on their word that they're, run their businesses well, and I think we have to prove of it because there are other businesses in town that they're running that they're running well. But doesn't mean that that's gonna always stay. So I don't think we need an assurance from somebody else because they can give us the assurances, they don't have to follow it, we see that all the time. But I think the, if they change the use from stores to something else, they'd have to come up.
Yes, they'd have to do that.
And I think by the nature of the design of the buildings, it only, it lends itself to has to be an attendant facility because there is only effectively two doors. The, you know, because you have to, by fire code, it has two doors, right? But effectively, there's just one door, right? So, you can't just, you're gonna, always gonna have to have, there's always gonna be some control over the buildings because of the way in which they're built. And if they were going to change the way they were running the place and being a twenty-four hour facility, they would have to make substantial changes to the building, which would require.
Well, they could give everybody, everybody who is a, give them a key.
Yeah.
I mean, you could, but that'd be a wild idea.
Yeah.
Again, I mean, I'm open to a limitation that if we sell it, it has to be, you know.
We can't, we can't manage how they run their business.
No, no.
It's a business district.
And something I'd like to point out too, the, you know, the, the storage portion of it is the way the buildings are constructed, you know, they, you, it's not like it's an open frame building. You'd literally have to dismantle, especially these new buildings that are going up, are built kind of like an erector set where it literally clips together and it's all storage units. So you can't, it's not like you go, oh, I'm gonna come in here and knock all the walls down. Well, the building would fall down.
Yeah.
So.
I think the way they're designed prevents it from really being used differently. And I, I, you know, I think just, we can't, we can't control, it's a business district. We can't tell them how to run their business.
But I think one of the things we could do is we could mandate, which they do now pretty much, that the facility is only, is only available between the hours of.
X and X.
Nine and five or whatever, well, you know.
But what does, how does that affect us as a zoning board? That doesn't affect the aquifer.
Well, yeah, it does because what, what it does then is it, it allows, it, it makes it so that people just can't come and go and do whatever they want there.
After hours.
After hours.
Yeah, but there's plenty of places where people.
But that, other places don't affect the aquifer. I mean, this is.
But that, but twenty, yeah, but I don't, I don't see it as being twenty-four seven and nine to five, Monday to Friday, has any effect on the aquifer.
Well, it does because it limits what people can do.
I do see, I do see the point. I, I think it's, I mean, I, I get what you're, and I'm, as, from our perspective, I mean, I don't know if we want to go nine to five, maybe stretch it like eight to six or something, in case we change our hours. But like, you know, limiting the access so that we don't have people coming in. It would be, it would be contained.
We're not worried.
It's gonna go in the ground somewheres.
No, I mean, what he's saying, you have, you, you'd need to, but what he's saying is, is if something were to leak within the unit.
You got them trained for it.
Uh, i- if something were to spill in a unit on the inside, it wouldn't be going outside. It would be caught immediately because we're there every day and it would be in the hallway.
But that's only because you're there every day managing it.
I think your concern is that someone's gonna come in at ten o'clock at night and.
Change their oil or.
Or, I.
What, who knows?
I got a lot, I got a lot of hazardous waste I want to get.
Yeah, exactly.
And I'm just gonna throw it in infiltration pond.
Yeah.
Right?
And they'd be on camera fortunately.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
But after the PFAS are in the river.
Right.
No, I, I hear that. I mean, and that's where the gate comes in.
I do think that controlling the hours does minimize the stuff because they can afford to have an attendant there, the attendant's gonna be monitoring. So I do think that should be one of our considerations. The thing that throws me off a little bit, that didn't even come up early in the hearing, was this batting cage. Is your batting cage also nine to five? I would think not.
I don't, I don't, I don't want to speculate, I don't know his specific hours. But what I'm gonna tell you right now, at the end of the day, it's, it's our facility and our building. And if you, if you say, these are the hours, then hey, those are the hours.
You know, I wouldn't want to restrict recreational activity that would be good, but we just have to make a distinction between the, the storage pot.
And the. Understood.
In reality, having a bunch of children in their, the batting cage is actually, really is affecting the septic system. It's not just five or six attendants, it's actually a larger.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a larger.
For an hour, you work for an hour, and you got ten kids, they're standing in front of you for the whole, whole hour.
No, and it is, I will say, as much as there might be a large amount of kids, they are there, as Ray pointed out, for a short period of time.
And how does that factor into the septic approval?
They, they, I mean, they, it went all through the Board of Health and the Board of.
Did the Board of Health know there was a batting cage in there?
I mean, it's in existing use and.
But did they know about it? We didn't know.
I did, I mean, I, I did not go before the Board of Health. Our septic engineer did and he designed, he assured us that it was designed to specs and standards, you know.
Permitting use, right, Ralph? Permitting use.
But they're downgrading the septic to be only.
Well, right now, it, currently, as we are sitting.
They're down, they're upgrading, they're downgrading to upgrade it, I mean.
The existing system failed Title V.
Yeah.
So we had to, we had no choice to, but to resize and redesign. And our septic engineer designed it for, you know, what, what is there.
For, for storage and the batting cage.
As far as I'm, as far as I'm aware.
Well, the storage don't have any facilities.
Except for the.
Yeah, it has one bathroom for the storage. But again, you know, I.
It's designed for.
If we see a hundred people in a month, I bet you five of them use the bathroom.
Yeah. Did you say, uh, one bathroom, one bathroom per building or one?
No, no, none of, the only bathrooms that are in existence and will remain are the ones in the school. And we've even eliminated two of the, like, the bigger bathrooms with multiple stalls, those are all gone.
Yeah, so that was probably.
Those are all gone. Single, yeah, exactly. That, exactly, that factored in as well.
The only thing I, I think I have, I have an issue with storage of any vehicles there. I know you said that, you know, it was a school and there was a lot more traffic, but that was before there was an aquifer protection dis- district. So in my view is that just because there's always been cars there, sort of, doesn't really make the point that the whole point is we have new regulations for this area. And that means we don't, we want to mitigate how much is going into the, into the water. And I think the, your, your argument that there's been more cars than the five or six or ten cars used, cars and RVs and boats you store there, doesn't really sit well with me. And I think storing, I mean, they're storing things that are not, are not to be stored there, right? It's in their, it's in our bylaws that you can't have propane, you can't have gasoline, and all those things have those. And they have, you know, they have oil, they have, you know, they have oil. Even if it's just an RV that gets hooked up onto a truck, there's oil in the bearings that can leak. So I would prefer that I would, would see no car storage at all there.
Am I allowed to respond to that or?
What's that?
Can I? So what I had mentioned to one of the comments was that maybe we, because it is a part of our business and, you know, if we can keep some sort of it would be great, but I'd be willing to say, what if we limit that specific facility to only storing vehicles that are within fifteen years old? So now we're assuring that these are, you know, again, and they're registered, they're inspected, they have to travel over the road, and in order to do so, they need to be, you know, they can't be leaking anything.
Fifteen years is an old car.
Are you storing vehicles that are unregistered?
Uh, we, I mean, we don't.
Well, let's say I don't want to live, I'm only gonna register for six months and then I'm gonna put my camper at your place, but is it registered at that point?
I, I, I mean, we typically require you to show.
They can only be registered vehicle.
We could, we could limit that.
But that doesn't change the fact of, I mean, I think most storage facility requires them to be registered and insured. But I think there are bylaws saying you can't store propane and campers have propane in them and they, and boats have gasoline in them and, and if that's, I think that goes against, I would, we would have to make an exception.
Well, we, we approved the water protection for the, for the DeMello place.
Yeah, and they have trucks.
They have trucks and, and they were washing down stuff with chemicals.
They, they actually managed it though.
He's managing it?
No, they're, they're managing storm, storm grade.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, but if we, because right now, the only storage of vehicles we have is along this westerly portion. And we're saying all of the water flows to the west. Would it be possible, most of the water?
Yeah, north, north.
North, sorry. I had my directions wrong there. If we put a catch basin like DeMello did, which I saw you guys required, for an oil separator, as a, as a catch-all, nine times out of ten, it's just gonna be water because we don't have any spills. But on the off chance that there were, we're directing all the water flow to that northerly portion. I mean, could we, do you think that's feasible or is that?
It is, uh.
Within reason, if it's, if it's an exorbitant undertaking.
The question would be, okay, you're catching it, you put it through an oil water separator, then where's it going?
Well, we'd get, we would pump it out in the same way that DeMello had because we would have an alarm on it or something to that effect.
So you're saying it's basically a tight tank on what you'd like to do?
Well, with an oil, tight tank for the oil portion. Because can you have an alarm that goes off for oil?
Oh yeah, you can have high water alarm.
In an oil tank?
No, I mean, that would be difficult to do and it also would trigger more false negatives because you could have somebody with a leaky gas tank out of one seventy-seven and have the gas go into that.
Yeah, that could happen now.
I guess my issue is that if we let them have outdoor car storage, what prevents somebody later having indoor car storage?
The property, the way the buildings are designed, you could never bring a car inside.
What about the existing building?
There's no way. The doors are all standard walk doors.
What about the?
No roll-up doors, even in the gymnasium. And again, put a stipulate, put a condition in there that no indoor car storage. We have no intention.
This is all with seven cars, so I know about car storage. There's not enough of it. So, I appreciate that you're, you know, you're providing that. It's just that it is in a protected area and I.
We have no int, none of these buildings are designed for car storage.
And at least we should not have maintenance being done.
We agree, we agree. That is not allowed.
Yeah.
No, it is, that's in the, in the rules for us.
Other than the maintenance, which I would oppose, I, I, I don't think it's unreasonable to allow vehicles to be parked there.
Well, they're not being parked, they're being stored.
They're stored, okay.
Which is different than being parked.
I'm saying, I'm not opposed to, okay? And, because I think it's highly unlikely and if, if something, you know, a condition, sort of, what he had indicated, that it's just frosting on a cake as far as I'm concerned, I don't think it's likely that, that we're gonna have any active leaks. All, all up and down Route Six now, I really don't.
Yeah, exactly. I'm saying that and there's the car, there's the car dealerships right there.
And they're in, they're on the border of the aquifer.
Yeah, I guess.
Right.
I mean, I was, I was aware when I.
Yeah, no, no, I, it's a concern. It's a, it's a fair concern. Yeah, no, no, I, it's a concern, it's a, it's a fair concern.
Certainly, I think that one of the things they, and I know you don't allow this, but is that, that we, that no maintenance of any, of any.
Right.
Kind.
Any vehicle, RV, boat, be, be conducted on premises.
Absolutely. No, we don't allow that as it is.
Right.
You don't allow.
As soon as we caught the, the guy that they were all talking about doing that, we put an end to it immediately.
So it wasn't only because he was taking them apart, no, but you're saying you, you don't allow them working on.
Absolutely, no.
Okay.
No, it is purely storage, nope, we don't, I mean, we don't have a water hookup for tenants or anything like that.
So I don't.
Are we capturing any of this?
I have a question about, um, the smaller infiltration pond or whatever you call it, that's, uh, at the end of the.
The northeast corner?
Yes.
Sure.
Um, um, a gentleman, uh, expressed his concern about that it wouldn't be big enough to, um, to capture all, because it is a large building, uh, the runoff of the roof. And I'm just curious as to, I'm, I'm sure you must, I'm sure you've got, um, calculations and how you do that, and at, at what point, like, it was that, is that something that you did after speaking with CONCOM or someone else? I mean, how did, how did that work?
Okay, so both CONCOM and the planning board fall under the state Massachusetts stormwater guidelines. There's guidelines you have to meet, you have to meet this, that, and this. Westport has a little additional thing when it comes to the aquifer protection, that if you have fifteen percent impervious area, you wouldn't have to do that anywhere else in town, this much water, for instance. A lot of it, you, you allow infiltration and you allow some to just discharge, that's your typical detention pond. The ponds have to be sized to infiltrate the water. Now, when you say it's not big enough, it's not like it's, it all goes in and then it starts infiltrating. It starts infiltrating as soon as the water starts going into the pond, so when you have an inch of water in the pond, and in this material, one inch of water falls in about four minutes. So as it's picking up, and there's a tremendous amount of water that's gonna come off these buildings, there's no doubt, it's all impervious area, you're talking, you know, eighty-two hun- eighty-two hundred square feet of, and you're talking eight-inch rainfall, you have to size it for. So you're talking six thousand gallons of water, basically, a minute coming into this pond, and it has to infiltrate. So you, you, like you would do with, uh, septic system or something along that line, you have to size the pond to infiltrate enough bottom area to infiltrate X amount of inches per hour, with the stipulation that obviously you have to filter everything before it goes in the pond or it kind of makes pond not work. And then on top of that, you have to do it so it never, it's supposed to overtop. Now, if you get twenty inches of rainstorm, and there are rainstorms that we all know, that you, you can get three inches of rain in an hour. We have to handle that. If we get eight inches of rain an hour, which is above a five-hundred-year storm, it's gonna flood like it did, as the gentleman mentioned, in 2010, when every road, you know, when the two of the top of ponds were connected again across 195 during that year. There's not much you can do about a catastrophic flood, there is not much you can do. You could, you could size this thing, you know, you'd have to size the whole property to be a pond, basically, to handle a storm like that, the whole point.
Is any, uh, is, uh, is, uh, any, uh, none of this, uh, that you're talking about, uh, already impervious?
A lot, most of this site is impervious, uh, there's, there's over, a little over two acres.
Are they adding that much to it?
No, right now, there's no infiltration whatsoever, and there's nothing going on whatsoever, it just spills out on the ground and goes, we're haphazardly. So the difference is now everything's gonna be controlled and infiltrated.
We're improving this.
We're improving a situation that, yeah.
It's already going, it's not all going into the ground right there.
But there's more impervious, uh, area now.
Because this is grass.
But there are, but we're gonna be infiltrating what we're adding and most of what was already there, so we're improving.
I think it makes sense to add that.
Non-conserving condition.
This is all gravel drive, but we have to count that as impervious surface, which is not done in any other district, simply because we're in the aquifer protection district, this will not be pavement. It will be a gravel driveway, so if we were outside of the aquifer, that would not count as an impervious surface, but because we are, it, we factor that into the calculation as well.
The, the whole point basically is to meet the requirement of your special permit, let alone the stormwater standards that is gonna be guided by conservation, we have to infiltrate this water.
But you're treating the dri- the pavement as blacktop, but in reality, it's not.
It's not.
Exactly, exactly.
But the, the, the standards of the, the stormwater standards just throw, just, for instance, so impervious areas is number ninety-five on the runoff curve, which is like ninety-five percent of it runs off, basically, if you think of it that way. Typically gravel, it's about eighty percent. This planning board makes you treat gravel as pavement.
Yeah.
So the part that would actually be going in, they're considering as runoff.
So originally, this, all this, this, where you have your gravel, was probably all originally.
There's a distant gravel drive there now, that's closer, that you'll see underneath.
It's still blacktop on the westerly portion.
And that's, that's gonna stay blacktop?
That's gonna remain as it is.
Okay.
But I think you've got more impervious assist, um, square footage with the building, the buildings, the roofs than you do with the gravel.
Yes, oh, oh, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, whenever you have a school building or a mall or something like that, there's a tremendous amount, the amount of roof runoff is astounding, uh, if you go to do the calculation. Right now, there's no control on anything out there.
No.
No?
We close the hearing.
Okay.
I mean, it'll be verified, just for his sake, he doesn't believe his size correctly, and he'll go back and forth, the consultant who also will review them. Who, who also review all the calculations, all the stormwater runoff, all, and will make comments and recommendations or any type of thing that they don't believe, they're working for the town, they don't believe meet the requirements, but you have to meet the requirements, one way or the other.
Thanks. You write so weird.
I do.
The left hand.
I can't even read it.
He's an engineer, that's why.
No, my wife works, she, hers is worse, but she's like, well, left-handed, yeah.
We've had two, two different viewpoints on, on whether to gate the entrance or not, and, uh, my own thought is just to leave it, and as Constance indicated, you know, you don't want to put barriers where, where wildlife can't move through and all that anymore than necessary. So my own thought is leave it be, if they find that, uh, in an actual operation.
Well, it doesn't really have to be a limiting gate, it can be a swing gate.
Yeah, well, whatever.
And animals can get through that.
Yeah, I was just talking about fencing.
Fencing, yeah. But the gate for the driveway, I mean, I, I don't know, I think maybe the gate would be good, because I think, I don't, you know, I think you want to just, I think you want to discourage people coming at all hours of night.
Because there's no way then, if you don't do that, then you can't manage maintenance of, of the equip, of, of cars, boats.
Very fair, and I, and in regards to what Constance said, you know, I hear you, Jerry, but if we just put a gate at the, where you pull off a 177.
Yeah, similar to.
We're not, we're not stopping any animals from running around, I mean, they're coming off 177, they gotta go over the gate.
It's just a swing gate or whatever.
Your people with the storage that you mentioned earlier from accessing their boat, uh, their RV.
And depending on if, if we put a restriction on the time, that, we limit that, I mean, we, like I said, our facility up the street is gated now, and the people that have outdoor storage have a key to that gate, so, you know, we could do.
You were doing that.
Look, that's what we do now.
And they could also limit that, saying that after ten o'clock, you can't.
You can't, well, and if we, at, at this point in time, it's easy, well, I don't want to say it's easy, but you, you can do swipe card. Yeah, well, that's the other thing, I mean, directly across the street from us is the Nokachoke Village, or I, I believe it's called the Nokachoke Village, with, you know, I don't know how many residents are, are over there, you know?
I'm saying, your other, your other place up, uh, by the.
Yeah.
Does that Nokachoke, that's not Nokachoke?
No, no, no.
But you have, there's like a ton of development.
In the, in the back, yes. And they, I mean, and honestly, everybody that lives back there likes it because it's quiet, I mean, the storage after hours.
Or like led enough to a cemetery.
Yeah, exactly.
Except for.
So there's not, no, we don't have any ghosts running around.
Well, I mean, if, um, if, again, we're, we're discussing, you know, how, how we would approve or, or reject this, uh, conditions that I would think, well, first of all, the condition always is based on the current plan, because if that plan changes, then all bets are off.
Yep.
We always, that's always part of our condition. I, I believe we, we really need to limit access, and whatever hours, eight to six, whatever is, is appropriate, it's fine with me. A condition that no maintenance be done on cars, RVs, boats, you know, no maintenance or, or, uh, any, any work done on, 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 on vehicles. And, you know, you, you have to adhere to the prohibitions of four-point-two-point, uh, six-point-two-point-four B and C, which has all the prohibited things about what you can and cannot store.
Do you want to, uh, uh, limit the vehicles to registered and, uh, maybe fifteen years old or whatever?
Well, that's, that's up to.
Yeah.
I do think.
I have no problem with that.
They have to be registered because.
No, they could bring them in on a flatbed.
We do, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you, we don't have unregistered vehicles, somebody buys a car and, hey, I'm gonna get to it, you know, and they put it over there. But again, like, we're unique because we do have these two facilities, so if we have to rearrange things to where this facility is strictly limited with what we put there, then we'll just put the other ones at the other facility, they're not in the aquifer. I mean, I'm not trying to be smart, but you know what I mean, we can, we can work with it, it doesn't really cause a big ruckus.
I, I think.
And I agree with.
The concern is that you're, you're not putting some devil-like piece of junk.
Yeah, I, I agree.
And well, you don't want that either.
No, no, it doesn't, it doesn't do any good.
I think, you know, I think, you know.
I don't know how we write that in, but.
They have to say.
I think, I think the way we write that in is, is the, is something about the year, because, you know, that's gonna keep it relatively new, I know you said fifteen years old's an old car, but, you know, two thousand and five isn't.
It's still a runtable car.
Yeah, you know, I mean, and again, we're okay with not, with limiting it to boats and RVs, I think that takes it even a step further.
Yes.
To where we don't have any cars on site.
I would be.
Well, if you want that.
I like that, I like that. I, I think, and I think that kind of takes a big chunk out of the.
Yeah, because people are storing cars outside, there's.
They're not nice cars.
No.
Like, like, no, I mean, we all park our, I park my truck outside, it's pretty nice, but if you're parking it at a storage and not using it at all, I, I agree with that.
It's not, you know.
From our experience, yeah, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that would, that would be a big help.
I'm, I'm open to that.
That would be a big help.
And you can send it to the other place.
Which is why I'm agreeable to that.
There aren't many cars there either.
No, I mean, honestly, we don't get it, uh, across both facilities, I mean, we maybe have five, ten cars, it's not a common.
Because it's outside.
A lot of people want to pay for, you know, again, and you don't want to pay to have a spot, a lot of people find it cheaper, like, we're not the cheapest with indoor or outdoor.
Parking somebody's yard somewheres.
Yeah, you know, as long as it's not in the aquifer.
There's a bunch of those, anyway, that's beside.
I'd be fine with the RVs.
Do we need to make any distinction for the batting cages? I, I thought we might have to deal with something with the hours, but if we can, if that's okay, ten to six, uh, I mean, uh, eight to six.
Is eight to six a good number?
I mean, I, I, I would, I would ask, maybe we do like, Ray, you probably know more than I, as to what time he does.
You know, I, I don't think.
Eight to eight?
I don't think the younger kids are using it after eight o'clock, I mean.
So if we did eight AM to eight PM, that eliminates the nighttime issue, and, and again, we're nine to five. So, and we can limit the, eight to eight would kind of solve all problems.
I don't know what he does for sixteen to eighteen year group.
I don't, I don't either, but I, I.
In college kids are.
I've not seen him there that late, but again, I mean, I'm not there every day, so I'm not gonna speak to that.
Well, are, is, any of your plans eventually is to make that space in the storage?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
It is intention, eventually, but, you know, it is what it is right now, it works, but eventually, yeah, the plan is to transform the entire facility into storage.
Oh, is that, is that gonna have any impact on the need for parking spaces, not necessarily related to the aquifer, but when.
The batting cage or the?
The batting cage, you know.
I mean, there's a lot of, lot of parking.
Oh, they're kids, they're not, they're getting dropped off.
And there's, there's a lot of parking.
Stay and watch.
No.
I mean, we, if we were to draw lines, which we don't have right now, I mean, I'd be hard pressed to think we have less than twenty-five to forty spots there, even with the RVs and boats that we have stored. So I, I think parking-wise, we'd be fine, and again, long-term, we're limiting that to begin with.
I mean, is there, is there, is there a sto- is there a parking requirement for storage facilities?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
I think it's just it'd be warehousing, right?
Yeah, there's, it's under warehousing, it's once about a thousand square feet, it can be waved on certain instances, and then there's like one for every employee that will be there full-time.
But that's a site plan review deal.
Yeah.
And even then, if we have thirty to forty spots, we don't have, even with the new buildings, we wouldn't be over thirty to forty thousand square feet of, of building, so, again, I think we'd be within the parking area.
I would just, I guess, the only other thing is when the plans do go to the planning board, I'd like the fact that this is not using, is not being used as stores, and is using as a batting cage, so they're aware of it.
Mark, and put a mark on the plan.
And then this is, this first story dwelling is being used as storage, and it just markets.
Put a label on that, that's, that's.
It's like, you know, other than the gentleman here is saying some of the batting cage, not, except, not me, Ray knew, but none of us knew.
That's fine, yeah, we'll put that note.
You had mentioned before about propane tanks and the RVs.
Yeah.
Is that any issue you want to address?
They got them, right, I mean, if you're gonna let RVs, they're gonna have a propane tanks attached to them.
I, I think it's unreasonable to.
Especially a big RV, you can't move them.
Yeah, unreasonable.
No, you can't, the tanks are internal. Yeah, you can't, you can't take them out, unfortunately. But I, again, and I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, a propane tank would leak, it would leak into the air.
It would leak into the air, yeah.
Wouldn't leak into the aquifer.
The propane is as much as the gas.
It would, yeah, it's a gas.
I don't think it's an issue myself.
No. I don't either. All right, uh, anybody ready for a motion?
I'm so ready.
Make a motion.
I mean, where's the thing, what are we at here?
We covered all the.
All the bottom.
All, all of the aquifer concern.
Yes, we went through all the.
Okay. I move that we approve the special. Pardon?
Grant. We grant.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said rant, I'm like, I'm, it's been a long day.
Yes.
Rant, I move that we rant. I move that we grant a special permit to construct three additional storage buildings in the aquifer protection district as mandated by zoning bylaw, Article Six, Section six-point-two-point-four C. The subject property is located at eleven-eighty American Legion Highway, Westport, Massachusetts, and is shown on accessories, the accessories map, twenty-eight lots thirty-two F, thirty-two H, and thirty-two J with the following.
With the following conditions, uh, condition number one, uh, related to the current plan as provided by, by the applicant, uh, at, at this meeting, a gated, limited access with hours of eight AM to eight PM, uh, no storage of automobiles, no maintenance on RVs, boats, et cetera, well, I can't say et cetera, because it could be anything, uh, adherence to the provisions of six-point-two-point-four B and C, uh, in the aquifer protection district, anything, what that does is say you can't have fertilizers or any of those things.
Now, you said no automobiles.
No automobiles, no storage of automobiles.
I'm curious about, uh, the word vehicles as opposed to trucks, motorcycles, is that okay?
Okay, yeah.
Say cars, cars, trucks, and motorcycles, or do you want to say only RVs and boats?
Only RVs and boats.
Well, I would, I would rather be very specific in saying no cars, no trucks.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's fine, no cars, no trucks, no motorcycles.
Well, okay.
Be, be specific, because if I, the other way.
Yeah, it leaves it open to interpretation.
Can I leave my backhoe there?
No.
Tractors.
No tractors.
No tractors, no ATVs.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, right.
That's why I said, I think it's best to say only and, and, no, no motor vehicles.
No motor vehicles.
Except for.
Except for.
For RVs.
Except for RVs and boats, they're not really considered motor vehicles.
Well.
Well, I'm thinking of, uh, an RV would be.
An RV.
RV could.
Okay, so anyway, no motor vehicles.
Trailers, because like I have a horse trailer there, and I'd like to keep that parked there, there's no oil and no propane, nothing on that.
There could be manure.
It's not a motor vehicle.
There could, but we clean it after we use it.
Not a motor vehicle.
Yeah, all right, that's true.
Not a motor vehicle, doesn't have a motor in it.
All right.
Yeah. Uh, are we at all for a minute?
Because an RV does have a motor in it.
Of RVs and boats, uh, we, we, we were just talking about this western edge.
There's really nowhere else to put them.
Yeah.
Outside of that.
There's no room on the.
Yeah, but you just said a minute ago, if you lined it up, you'd get thirty, thirty, uh, parking spaces. Why would that help you from doing it?
No, I'm saying on that westerly portion.
But why would, so, whether there's five or six or eight or ten.
I, I, that's what I'm asking, does it matter?
I.
If he says wanting to, to rent out.
I think the planning, that's the planning, then, they have so many par- they have to have enough parking for their specific use.
Yes.
And then anything else.
Then anything else they can use for storage.
Orage.
Cars, I mean, not.
Not cars.
Oats and, oats and horse trailers.
Yes.
Because, I mean, some RVs have motors in them.
Yes.
Which is, yeah, except for RVs.
Yeah, but I did say no maintenance to be done.
Yes, on anything.
On anything. Because that's obviously a big, because obviously you're gonna get leaks when you do that.
Yes.
Anything else?
Would, um, taking the junk off the bottom of boats, whatever you call that.
They can't wash.
I think that qualifies under maintenance.
Yeah.
I mean, nobody's wa- we don't have a, we don't have a, no water.
Mobile washers that come around and do that, so, are you saying you.
No maintenance.
No maintenance, maintenance.
No maintenance.
Is that maintenance?
Mm-hmm.
I think it is.
Yeah, that's definitely maintenance, my boat it is.
Yep, that is, yep.
Is brushing your teeth maintenance?
Well, we could say maintenance and painting, because that's another big thing with an aquifer, is.
Is what?
You know, painting of the, painting of anything.
Vehicles.
You're not gonna paint, you know, paint your boat, paint, paint your.
No, I would not need maintenance too.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, you, you can park it there, that's it. You can park it there and you can pull it out of there, that's it.
We have to have enough, how do we write that?
Well, that's, that's what's in the, uh, six-point-two-point-four B and C.
Yeah, I think anything that you didn't mention is definitely covered under six-point-two-point-four.
I don't know any storage facilities allow you to do any of that.
No. Who wants to second that motion?
Yeah. I, I will second.
Okay.
So we have a motion and.
I'll second it.
Okay, you'll second it, good. Excuse me, no. Um.
I think it becomes complicated. If, if you guys are okay with it, then I'd prefer we don't. These, all of these restrictions will live with the property.
I mean, I don't know if, I mean, we, you had talked about the de-discrimination that just says if you sell the property, you have to, you have to, you have to come back to the zoning board.
I have, I, again, I don't have an issue with that.
Okay, I think that's, cause that at least then covers.
Alleviates any other concerns. So change, change of ownership would require zoning board approval.
The use.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you wanted the use, not to change ownership, they're not gonna check, they're not gonna approve the new owner.
Well, that's what they, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I mean, that was, yeah, it's up to you, it's up to you guys. I, I think either way.
I guess the approved use is only for the current owner and therefore if any change of ownership, they have to come back and see if it's still approved use.
So, well, it's two different things. A change of use would mean, cause if we just sell it and it stays storage, that's not a change of use.
Right, right. But if you say.
Well, no, 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 no. If you sell the property, we want them to come back.
And that's, and that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Cause then we have to make sure that they're gonna manage the property the same way you do.
If you don't approve the owner, they approve.
They approve.
The use.
Yes, okay, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, exactly.
The owner's use and whatever.
They have to get, they have to reply for.
Property change.
The, the use.
Anything else? We have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? Yes.
Yes.
Ray did.
Yeah.
Mr. Second.
Yeah, Mr. S- yeah, he snuck it in there. Yep, uh.
Want a second, a double second, just so we don't have to come back in?
Okay, from the voting members, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, no. That motion is, uh, is granted. There is a twenty-day appeal period and once again.